Come to the Cupertino City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We like to start the meeting right now. And if you are able, please raise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Yes, and Mayor, I want to make an announcement that Vice Mayor Mohan will be participating remotely tonight under an exemption allowed under the Brown Act. And Councilmember Chow is running a few minutes late. Councilmember Fruen?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
There.
Mayor Way?
Here. Thank you. Now, we do not have closed-section report, and I'm going to the ceremonial matters. We have two ceremonial matters to announce. This month, the city of Cupertino joins the entire nation as we honor and celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month, which takes place September fifteenth to October fifteenth every year as a time to recognize and celebrate the many contributions, diverse cultures, and extensive histories of the American Latino community. America is the land of possibilities. Hispanic Americans have helped build this nation as doctors, artists, entrepreneurs, scientists, businesses, military, and so much more. The faith and drive of the Latino community embodies the spirit of America and have pushed our country to grow and to prosper. On behalf of the city of Cupertino, we honor these important contributions toward a better America for all. Happy National Hispanic Heritage Month. And September is also National Preparedness Month. September is also National Preparedness Month. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, created the month to educate the public on how to prepare for and handle disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. This year's theme is "Take Control in One, Two, Three," which empowers everyone, especially older adults, to: one, assess their needs; second, make a plan; and three, engage their support network to stay safe when disaster strikes. The city of Cupertino's Office of Emergency Management has several public education events this month, and you can find more information on the city's social media channels and website at Cupertino.org. This conclude the ceremonial items. We are moving to postponements and orders of the day. Do we have any postponements?
No, Mayor Way.
Seeing none, we're moving to number seven, oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for people who wish to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion, including information items. Do we have any cards? Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, we have three speaker cards, three, excuse me, three speaker cards for requesters in Community Hall, and I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Please proceed.
A reminder to have your speaker card submitted or hand raised on Zoom in the next nine minutes. We'll start with Keith Kreft, followed by Don Halsey, followed by Peggy Griffin.
Good evening, Mayor Hungway and City Council members. My name is Keith Kreft. I'm a thirty-six-year, been in Cupertino for thirty-six years, and I've worked in the golf industry for twenty years, and I manage a database of information on golf courses. I can tell you how many beauty golf courses there are in the country, or if you want it by state and you want to know who's managing those courses, I can provide that data. I'd like to leave you with just a couple takeaways today. One is I sent you all an email about a month ago with this spreadsheet attached, and I'd just like to point out, I wasn't going to go through the entire thing, but I just wanted to say, it didn't take much of an effort to put this together to be able to show what the competitive, what your competitive golf courses in the area, what they're charging for various fees. And I've given a recommendation in the last column along with some percentage increases, and I want to say that this is kind of on the conservative, it's a conservative number. So you can, your team can, can take a look at this and decide you might want to increase the rate to be more competitive with Sunken Gardens or Prun Ridge. So this is, I don't expect the mayor of Cupertino to be setting golf rates, so, but your Parks and Rec people can, certainly could use this. And like I said, having worked in the golf industry for twenty years, if you need my advice, my help, you want more data, I can collect it for you, I can provide it to your team. Second thing I wanted to touch base on is your senior rate. There was a paper presented at the PGA merchandise show last, last, in November back in, they meet every, in Orlando, every end of January, and the discussion was whether or not a golf course should have their senior rate at sixty, age sixty, or sixty-five. And they were showing how much revenue a golf course was losing by setting it at sixty-five. Our rates are set, the threshold comes in at fifty here. So you're losing a lot of money. The whole intent of having a senior golf rate is to get retired people who aren't working to be able to come in and play more than once during the week, not just to give them a price break. And I think you should be strongly considering, and actually, the takeaway from that, that discussion was that they should probably set the senior rate at sixty-six, more in line with the guidelines for Social Security benefits. And when they move to sixty-seven, raise it again. So I'm encouraging you to look at that rate.
Thank you, Keith. That is your time. Next, we have, that's your time. Thank you.
Time's up already?
Yes, time elapsed. Yes, three minutes for everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have Don Halsey, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Ricardo Acevedo. Welcome, Don.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, City Attorney.
Don, would you please speak into the microphone, and then we can all hear you. Thank you.
Okay, and we're starting our three, okay. So good evening to all of you. I'm going to use the low-tech approach that I used the last time. I find that works best, even though we are in Cupertino. Don Halsey representing the Friends of Blackberry Farm Golf Course. I'm going to talk about management alternatives. On the seventeenth, you will decide, continue the golf course or not. That's a decision that's up to you. Hiding right behind that, even if you decide yes, is, how shall we manage it? The good question. There's different approaches. This is some quick research I did. One approach is, A, Cupertino, no change, just continue managing whatever you're doing. Another one is Courseco. They manage Deep Cliff already, so many of us who play golf have played both paces, and you can see what it's like to subcontract to somebody. Now, there are non-Courseco opportunities, and you're right to consider, if we have Courseco managing two nearly adjacent golf courses, would that introduce some issues? Yes, maybe, possibly good, possibly bad, but this is a collection of people other than Courseco that can do the work. And then the fourth one is Oasis, and they rather replan the golf course and make it a family center. There are many options you've got, okay? I've got the links here, I'll send that to the city clerk afterwards, so you can use them. You might ask, well, what do the people who are friends of Golfing, Blackberry Farm Golf, what do they want? I took a survey of them, and you can see that some favor the city, a few more prefer using Courseco, most prefer some non-Courseco alternative. I put in Oasis at one percent. They actually got no votes at all, but it made it disappear from the graph, so I forced it to one, just to, you can see, the heavyweight is non-Courseco. So some things, though, you need to consider if you go the path of subcontracting. A contract usually will run three to ten years on the different providers, typically five, it's renewable. One form is a management service contract where they do all the work for you, the, behind the counter and all of that, and whatever profit or loss happens flows right to the city, okay? Maybe you don't want that anymore, okay? Another one is a turnkey or a lease arrangement where you get some rent from them, and they have to do everything, including make their own profit. And if they don't do it, that's their problem. On the, about a year ago, we did this table, "we," meaning city, put that out on Engage Cupertino, which shows eight-point-some million dollars lost over twenty-five years, which really works out to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars lost.
Thank you, Don. That is your time.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, for the record, Councilmember Chow has joined the dais. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Ricardo Acevedo, followed by Thomas Haladnik.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff. Every week, every meeting, we lose some transparency. It's like a dripping faucet. Every time, I see something else missing, something else not as complete as it used to be. This week, I want to talk about treasurer's investment reports. I just noticed, but I think it's been happening for several months, no sign off of the treasurer, not even an initial to tell me that somebody looked at it. No Chandler custodial report. This lists the assets and the cash, how much cash do we have? No PARS pension and OPEB account statements. If I was a employee, I'd want to keep track and watch that, because that's my retirement, and I'd want to see. It shows the return on that money. It's important. No LAIF account statement. What's that? It's a local agency investment fund. It's kind of managed by the state, the city can use it, to invest money at no additional cost to the taxpayer. When I look at the treasurer's report, I expect it to give me a complete picture of what the city's finances are, but there are all these missing pieces. I want to know where it all is, how it goes, and it's not there anymore. We're also missing city manager's report. We used to have a nice verbal what the city's doing, nothing formal, not what they've completed, but kind of what they've been working on. It kind of made you feel part of the city to hear that. Then it became videos, didn't give us a whole lot of information, and now there's nothing. Another drip, drip, drip. It's frustrating and sad. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Ricardo Acevedo, followed by Thomas Haladnik, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Ricardo.
Hello, thank you for having me here tonight. Today, I come before you to address a pressing issue that affects the heart of our city: unethical and unsafe behavior within our workplaces. Our city's workforce is the backbone of our community, and it is our collective responsibility to ensure their well-being and uphold the highest ethical standards. I work for your city. I happen to be a Maintenance One worker here. Recent events have unveiled disturbing instances of unethical and unsafe behavior within some of our workplaces. These issues not only endanger our lives and well-being of our fellow citizens, but also undermine the integrity of our city's institutions. It is incumbent upon us to confront these issues head-on and take decisive action. Allow me to shed some light on specific examples that have come to our attention. Safety violations. There have been reports of safety violations in city departments ranging from inadequate reporting to the lack of proper training. This jeopardizes the health and safety of our dedicated city employees. Harassment and discrimination. These behaviors create hostile environments for cities and go against the values of inclusivity and respect that our city should uphold. And one of the biggest ones is misuse of authority. In some cases, individuals in positions of authority have been found to misuse their power, creating an atmosphere of fear and intimidation that discourages reporting and accountability. The consequences of unethical and unsafe behavior in the workplace are profound. They harm the physical and mental well-being of our employees, erode morale, negatively impact the quality of services provided to our citizens, and moreover, such behavior damages our city's reputation and erodes the trust that our community places in its government. Addressing unethical and unsafe behavior in the workplace is not merely an option, but a moral imperative. It is essential for fostering a healthy, inclusive, and productive work environment where every city member can thrive and contribute their best to our community. It is equally vital for rebuilding trust between our city government, its citizens, and our workers. Therefore, I implore this city council to take resolute action. Comprehensive audits, we must initiate comprehensive workplace audits across all city departments to identify safety violations, unethical conduct, and harassment. These audits should be conducted by independent professionals to ensure impartiality and thoroughness. We should also strengthen our policies, review them, and make sure that they are being enforced in the workplace to conduct safety and, safety, and also to strengthen our reporting mechanisms. We must ensure that employees feel safe and empowered to report any wrongdoing without fear of retaliation. Training and education. We should invest more in ongoing training and education that also promote ethical behavior. And finally, accountability and support. Hold those responsible for unethical and unsafe behavior accountable through fair and transparent disciplinary processes. Simultaneously, provide support for employees who have experienced harm and established channels.
Thank you, Ricardo. That is your time.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Thomas Haladnik, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Thomas.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. This evening, I speak to you as president of the Board of Directors of the Meadows of Cupertino Homeowners Association. Meadows of Cupertino is an association of twenty-eight homes across Stevens Creek from Blackberry Farm and the golf course. I've been a resident and a homeowner in Cupertino since nineteen ninety-nine, and I'm proud to say that I love where I live. I believe, I speak for everyone in my association when I say that this is where we want to live the best years of our lives. Many of the association's members enjoy the trail along Stevens Creek and have played at the golf course. We believe that the mix of trails and recreational activities at Blackberry Farm helps bring our community together. This is a place where we can meet our friends and enjoy a range of activities. Speaking on behalf of the association, we urge you to consider the ways in which the golf course and other facilities at Blackberry Farm have provided the venue for building a better community. We believe the city's plan for an enhancement to the golf course will strengthen our community and provide value to our neighborhood and to the city. On behalf of my neighbors and friends, I want to register support for the plans to invest in the golf course and to continue to build a better community for us all. And I think there are others in support of this as well. Raise your hands. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Thomas. And our final speaker in Community Hall will be Rota Frye. Welcome, Rota. Then we will move to Zoom.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'd like, I'd first like to concur with Peggy, and my sentiments are quite similar, although I'm going to give different examples to illustrate my concerns. I'm a forty-year Cupertino resident, also recipient of the Crest Award from the city in two thousand and twenty-two, and I'm deeply troubled by the continued erosion of transparency in our city. Most recently, without council or public input, recording of Parks and Rec meetings have ceased. Why didn't this issue come to city council? City Council, Planning Commission, and Parks and Rec Commission all make decisions that impact the finances of our city and directly impact the daily lives of our citizens. I would like to understand how this decision was made without council input, and I ask that the council reinstate the recording of the Parks and Rec Commission meetings. Under our mayor's regime, we have also lost transparency and civic engagement through the termination of a number of commissions, canceled Planning Commission meetings, and on July eighteen, prohibiting the opportunity for, of some members of the public to provide input on an item. This important fact is not in the minutes. One was a gentleman who asked that his young son, who submitted a card, speak. Upon leaving his city hall, he died. That is his son's last memory of his father, the city of Cupertino ignoring our citizens. To my knowledge, two-time Mayor Scharf retained the three minutes per person, and three-time Mayor Paul occasionally reduced speaker time to two minutes. Yet, Mayor, you reduce the time to one minute, one speaker actually spoke twice, which took time away from other people, and other people were reduced to zero. Again, this is not in the minutes. For the second meeting in a row, I'm asking for a moment of silence for this man and Finally, I am submitting you, to you a paper copy of August thirtieth article from Bloomberg Tax pertaining to the risk of Cupertino losing sales tax revenue from Apple, which would represent about thirty percent cut in our city's overall revenues. It would be nice to get an update on what our city is doing instead of having to read it in Bloomberg News. And I got another bonus item. I would also ask, again, that the erroneous statements defaming our council members be retracted with a full apology. Please bring civic, civicness back to our city. Thank you.
And next, we will now move to Zoom. We have one speaker with their hand raised. San R., welcome, San.
Good evening, City Council. I want to firstly start with reporting out on the Movies in the Park event. We are very glad that the event was retained. It was a fantastic event, and I want to give kudos to all of the Parks and Rec staff that stayed through their Friday evenings to make the event a success. The event certainly lost some of the amenities that we had for kids in the past years. We no longer had events such as bouncy houses and kids' activities and so on, but having the event was better than having none. So I want to give kudos to all of the Parks and Rec staff. I actually had the opportunity to thank them in person, and I promised them I'd read out their names to acknowledge them in front of city council, so here goes. Thanks to Parks and Rec staff, Ari, Christina, Dom, Randy, Paul, and Shelley, all of whom worked all through summer, sacrificing their Friday evenings to give back to our city, and we appreciate it. Each of those events had three hundred or more people attending. I was disappointed, I was there for several of those Movies in the Park events, and I was disappointed not to see any of our council members there. You've missed an opportunity to connect with the public. The time to meet with the public is not just when you need to ask for votes, but to come out and see these events firsthand, so that citizens like us did not need to fight to save these events in the future. I, I hate to think what would have happened if we had not argued in front of you to save this event, and on that day, if you had not retained Movies in the Park. Perhaps three thousand or more people would not have had a Friday evening coming together as a community. I want to emphasize once again that Parks and Rec is really the face of the city to the public, and you need to be funding Parks and Rec a whole lot more than you do today. Parks and Rec budget is probably understaffed by, by over half of what it should be, and we'd like to see more events than Parks and Rec wants. Speaking of which, this past weekend, the famous Indian event, Dilly Heart, moved from Cupertino to San Jose. I do not even know if City Council is aware of this. The Dilly Heart organizer could not get an event in the city of Cupertino, and she had to move to History Park in San Jose. Once the event moves, it is unlikely to return again. This was a premier Indian event. When I contact city staff, I'm told there's another event that'll show up. That is like saying, the major leagues and the minor leagues are the same thing. All Indian events are not the same. Dilly Heart was one of the premier events, and we needed to see more of that. Finally, I want to bring to your attention that Valley Water Board has been removing trees all through Regnoard Creek in the area of Bub Road and Bolinger Road, running all the way from Bub Road to Bolinger Road. I'd like for city staff to inspect that area and see why permits were not taken. We had a chance to speak to Valley Water Board, and they said that they use the emergency directive to avoid taking permits. Mature oak trees have been taken.
Thank you, San. That is your time. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and I want to thank all the public commenter to make the oral communications. We appreciate your time and your comments. So I'm going to close the oral communications period, and then we'll move to consent agenda, please.
Could I request something?
Is, is, I.
Could I request, I think, the public commenter to please email your written, your speech to the council? Because I was trying to take note, I couldn't take everything down. So if you have a written version, please email to the council.
Yes.
And there was a request for one minute of silence. Is it appropriate to take that one minute of silence, silence for the community member who died outside of the city hall right now? Is that?
Let's, let's put that on the.
Appropriate?
Agenda to, if we want to do it. Okay, let's move to consent calendar, and we will put that on our agenda, okay? Okay, let's move to consent calendar number three to seven, and do we have anyone who pulled a consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, we have Councilmember Chow and Moore pulled item three, July eighteen council minutes. Chow pulled item five, accounts payable, and Moore pulled item six, evolved software agreement.
Okay, so consent number three, five, six have to report.
Sorry.
Okay.
I think the consent number five could, doesn't need to be pulled, because the staff has corrected the issue raised.
Okay.
So if we, if we, if we approve the amended staff report in the supplemental material, then we don't have to pull it.
Are you proposing to unpull the consent number five?
So, so I, I think it would be at the mayor's discretion, but certainly, if Councilmember Moore, if, if you are interested in withdrawing your request to remove the item from consent, I believe it could go back on.
Actually, Councilmember Chow pulled it, yes.
Yeah. It's the item that.
Number five.
To rectify the, I think the staff has acted swiftly to amend the report, so if the consent item is approving that amended report, then we don't have to pull it.
So, so you'd like to withdraw your request to remove the item?
Then I would redraw the request, yeah.
Okay, so we have consent number, number three and six being pulled. Now, I would like to, hey, open up public comment for consent number four, five, and seven. Any comments go to number three and six will be separate, because when we discuss that item, we will open public comment for that. So the public comment is for number three, no, I'm sorry, number four, five, and seven. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have one card in Community Hall for Peggy Griffin for item five. I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Peggy, welcome, Peggy.
Good evening again. I wanted to thank Mr. Roscoe for providing the updated revised weekly accounts payable for the week ending August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. I'm concerned, as Councilmember Chow, that when you approve your draft for this particular week, does it really specify the new, the revised version, or does it still, does this draft resolution include the old one that's not correct? I'd like you to make sure you are ratifying the correct revised version when you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And so we have no more speakers in Community Hall, so we will move to our one speaker on Zoom with their hand raised, which is San R. Welcome, San.
Yes, City Council, I'd like to speak in support of agenda item seven. And agenda item seven conflicts with agenda item six, which I will talk about later, but for an IP infrastructure and software of the scope of a city of Cupertino, with no development of your own and no in-house developers that are working on your own software, building on-premises server and storage infrastructure is the right decision. It is a cost-effective decision, and as many customers have discovered in recent years, the cloud costs more than on-premises. On-premises costs are one time, and then there's a tech refresh, as you're doing right now, that may be three to five years.
That may be three to five years apart. The cloud is a constantly running, ticking billing system. You pay for every minute and every second. And I would encourage you to continue to maintain your on-premises server and storage infrastructure and refresh it, and make sure that any proposals that are migrating to the cloud, you're asking a question about why are you investing on a server refresh while trying to then migrate to the cloud? Because those are competing initiatives. And you spent $389,000 rightfully on this agenda item seven. We expect that you're not spending another $500,000 in other places, which we'll talk about later. But I do support this initiative, and I encourage you to continue to maintain your on-premises hardware and to make sure that you're asking the cost question as to what is the cost comparison between any options you're offered that are not on-premises. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to close the public comment period for consent calendars, calendar number four, five, and seven. And now I would like to have a motion to approve consent calendar four, five, and seven with the addition of approving the staff's consent number five, the correct report.
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
So it's being moved and seconded. May we have a roll call because Vice Mayor Mohan is not here?
Yes, I will conduct the roll call, vote Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Aye.
Mayor Wei?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'm going to propose we move consent calendar number six before the action item because it is a timing issue on that one. And then consent number three, we'll move back to the last item after the agenda. So we are moving to consent number six.
Yes, would you like to make a motion to move consent item number six before the action calendar?
Yes. Do I need a second?
You do.
Okay. And any discussions? If not, let's have a roll call. Vote, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Aye.
Mayor Wei?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we are moving to consent calendar number six. Award a software S.A. service, S.A.A.S., agreement to evolve software cooperation for mitigation, deployment, and subscription services of project docs from on-premises environment to cloud services for a total cost of $488,680,050, including 10% contingency over five years. Do we have a staff report?
Mayor Wei, we do not have a staff report, but we do have the Chief Technology Officer, Bill Mitchell, available to answer any questions that you may have.
Open for council questions, then we, before public comment. Councilmember Moore, please. You're first because you pulled the item off.
Okay, thank you. So a fairly quick question. I'm just trying to see if this is something, if a fairly similar situation is what we saw a few, a couple of months ago regarding Quartic Solutions contract. The Evolve contracts appear to exceed $200,000 already, and I did a quick summation from about 2017 to the present on that, for that contract. And I was wondering if there was a reinterpretation of the contracts pertaining to the threshold or if the practice for handling the software contracts with an ongoing vendor has been changed? Because as I previously mentioned, there was something similar with Quartic Solutions, which was a long-term contract, and then it came to council. It exceeded the threshold, and then we corrected that. So I think I'm understanding it correctly, but I want to verify that that's what's happened here.
Sure. Bill, would you like to clarify that?
Absolutely. Mayor, Council, it's always a pleasure to chat with you. My name is Bill Mitchell. I'm the Chief Technology Officer for the city. Councilmember Moore, you are correct. Last year, the city realigned the way that we do purchasing contracts. Prior to that, it was an annual base, and if we did not go over the council threshold of $175,000, we did not go to council. However, this has changed, and now we're looking at a more constructive way of doing this, more transparent. We're looking at what the proposed lifespan of the system is. And for software, that's normally anywhere from five to seven years. So in this case, we're now bringing this forward to council with a five-year contract. I hope that answers your question.
Through the Mayor, yes, it does. And it's something that I'm kind of concerned about, that we might hit this in a number, on a number of contracts. Because, for instance, you might choose that you want a certain word processing company, and you're not going to be wanting to change that at any time. So, but you don't actually know if you're going to be keeping that vendor for five years, and it's going to go over the threshold amount. So I can see the challenge there, and I think that's what we're looking at.
So I can address that question. Yeah, so the standard is whether it's foreseeable that you will exceed the council approval threshold. And, you know, obviously, that can't be known with absolute certainty when you, you know, you enter into a contract that potentially has a long-term relationship with a vendor. But we, you know, we do the best to make a good-faith interpretation of that requirement.
Through the Mayor, may I ask, do you have some kind of a process where you get that alert that you've gone over the $200,000? Or is that something you're working on implementing as you're bringing our purchasing policy to the council?
I mean, it's addressed through review of contracts. You know, so the city attorney's office works closely with all the departments to review, you know, really all of the contracts, and so it's addressed in that process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow?
So has the internal auditor suggested any policy change so that this is not ad hoc, so that there is a process to follow?
I'm not aware of a suggestion from the eternal, a specific suggestion from the internal auditor, but the purchasing, a purchasing policy update, you know, is being developed. And so that's something that can be addressed more precisely in that update.
Okay, yeah, that, because previously, when the city went over the limit, I think the city attorney's office also reviewed the contract, missed that. And so there were the other BlackBerry from contract, right?
So I wouldn't say, I wouldn't necessarily characterize as missing that. It was just a different interpretation of a code provision.
Okay, so different people might have different interpretation of what's the limit. Maybe it's better to qualify it in some policies. Administrative policies, not the city council.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that. But, you know, that's the interpretation that our office has provided based on our current policies.
A question regarding the, I think the timer didn't-
I get it.
Yeah, okay. So a question regarding this contract. So we were, we still had the on-premise, on-premise software last year, and now I think Bill mentioned the on-premise software usually is good for five to 10, seven years. Then shouldn't we switch to subscription model after five years when our current version of on-premise software, on-premise software is still workable? Just like when you own a car, you don't want to switch to renting a car until your current car is not usable, right?
Councilmember Chow, that's a great, that's a great point. What I'd like to point out is that the current version that is on-prem is the last version that will be on-prem. So any future advancements to this software application, you will need to move to the SaaS-based application. That is, you know, the catalyst for us to move. Is that if we want to keep this patched up for security or if new mandates come out, we're able to keep the software up to date. Otherwise, well, just in your example, we're going to have a car that may not be able to run anymore, but that's how we're going to have to move.
But usually, when we purchase a software, they do provide us revisions, free upgrade, right?
They give us an option. They give us an option. Their option for us is you can stay on-prem without that support, or you can move to the SaaS-based application. This is what this company is putting forward at this point.
Okay, so and-
This is not unusual, this is not unusual for software companies. They are trying to reduce their expense for having multiple versions out there. When it's on a SaaS model, they may have one or two versions that they need to support. When it's on-prem, they're at the mercy of the staff.
That's okay. I have limited time, so I'll just go to the next question. So I think one member of the public brought up since we just purchased the on-premise version a year ago, and that's supposed to be good for five to seven years, could we get a discount? Did they give us a discount for moving to the subscription model?
Well, actually, we purchased the application way back in the early, you know, 2010, 2012 period of time. It went live in 2016. So we've had it operational and running for quite some time. It's not within the last year.
I thought we made the payment last year.
Well, we do a maintenance contract every year for software.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to ask this question. City Attorney Jensen has said that, you know, you review every contract and make judgment of whether they are over the threshold or not. Is it, every contract is so different, right? We have different types of contract, different software. So is that, that human determination is very important? Or can we easily make a rule to follow?
So I think there's a, there will always be an element of judgment. But, you know, but you could have different, you could do it differently. You know, that's not really, it's not really agendized for discussion, but certainly you could do it differently. But I would say, you know, the amount of attention really depends on the contract. We have, you know, template contracts, you know, that, you know, often require limited work from the city attorney's office. But when these kind of issues come up, you know, we provide advice to all the departments.
Thank you. What I'm trying to say is I do believe that sometimes there's nothing, one size fits all. Have some parameters is good. But to me, a city runs like a school district, many, many contracts. So every contract has different elements. I do believe that judgment is important. So thank you. And I don't have any other questions. Any other questions? If not, I'm going to open up to public comment. Do we have any cards?
I see one hand raised on Zoom. San R., welcome San.
Yes, hello, City Council. Firstly, I want to say there is a staff report on this item. So I'm surprised the city manager said there is no staff report on this item. Staff have taken the time to write a staff report, and so it's worth reading. I will also say that what Bill just described should have been in the staff report since that would have altered my comment on both six and seven. But I do concur with what Bill described based on what he just said, that if the vendor is transitioning out from on-prem to SaaS, and they are now down to a support model that is in the cloud only, then in the interest of security, you are going to need to make sure that you are running on versions that they will patch and support. Else you open your systems up to the threat of hacking. So I just want to ask you that you ensure that the right follow-ons happen with Bill and his team to ensure that you have a timeline for when the vendor stops supporting patches on the on-prem system. And if that is going to be imminent, then yes, this is imperative that you move in the interest of security, particularly since this is the city's permit systems. You have sensitive data that are from permit applicants, and you have permit processes that can get stalled and even worse, can get affected by malware and so on. So certainly something you want to take care and precaution with. I also want to bring to your attention that when such a transition happened in the city of Seattle, the city of Seattle's permit system actually caused a halt in new permitting for over six months. And this was just in the last two years. So I'd encourage you to take a study on what the city of Seattle went through with their change in permitting software and what caused their six-month delays, and ensure that our city is not going to go through a further delay in permitting. It's already, as I understand from other residents, a major hassle to get a permit in the city of Cupertino. It takes a fairly long time to go through the process. So I encourage you to learn from what the city of Seattle went through when they went through this process. And finally, I want to say, if you are transitioning, I don't see why this is a no-bid contract. I understand that you'd like to keep the same interface, but the reality is when you go from an on-premise to a cloud interface, things do change. The look and feel is going to be different. There is going to be some changes. And so you should be looking for more bids from other vendors, if nothing else, to drop pricing. So I'd encourage you to ask the right questions on why this is a single vendor bid and why aren't you getting more bids, if nothing else, to get more effective pricing. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And Mayor, that's our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to close the public comment on number six, bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Chow?
So, yeah, good question about how come this contract did not go out for bid.
I'll defer to Bill to respond to that question.
If not this year, was there a bidding process when we first adopted the software? And if we are continuing, I understand that it's advantageous to use the same software, but then what's the process in terms of IT? When we should go out for bid for potentially better product, better price?
Councilmember Chow, it's a two-part question. So part one, originally when we went out for the land management and the review software, that was a bid. So that did go out. That was an RFP process that went out and went before the council for approval. What this means for us is, and why we're staying with this, we did look at other applications at this time. We feel that because of the work that's been put into this application, the cost-effectiveness of the application, the satisfaction with the application, and the company profile, all of these things lumped together, it just made sense for us to stay together with this system. There's a lot of interfaces that are built in. There's a lot of workflows that the city has built together. Honestly, for us to go out and do an RFP, we would have had to start that work all over again.
Okay, that's fine. So just to clarify, so the first time when it went out for bid was 2010, you mentioned?
So when it was first awarded, it was in 2012, right? But it took, there were struggles with that implementation, I'll be fair with you. But it was more on the land management system, not on the Evolve system, because there was two products bid at the same time. So the land management system we had struggles with, and in 2016, 2017, we were able to resolve those issues. Since 2017, Evolve has been a very strong partner with us moving forward through the process. So in essence, we've only been on the software actively for the last six years. An enterprise software for us, or an enterprise software, even though I told you, you know, five to seven years is what we'll put on for the foreseeable future, if the software is good, you're going to keep that 15, 20 years. That's not unusual. So a little bit of background on Evolve real quick is they are 250 customers. They have 40% of the top 50 cities in the U.S., including Los Angeles, San Jose, and then very close to us, Mountain View, right? So they're a very seasoned company. They've been in history over 15 years. So we feel very confident in this product.
Thank you so much. That's good to know. So what other permitting softwares you have considered this round? Just curious.
One of the ones that we considered was a software called Digiplan. But as we were considering that, Evolve absorbed Digiplan. They bought them out. Now they're all under the Evolve bucket.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If there are more comments from council? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
We'll move the staff recommended action.
May I have a second?
A second.
It's moved by Councilmember Fruen, second by Councilmember Chow. Any more discussions? If not, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Fruen?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Aye.
Mayor Way?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now, there's no public hearing, so we're going to move into action calendar. Act number eight, subject is fiscal year 2023, 2024 internal audit program. We have a recommended action, and presenter is Finance Manager Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor Way. We also have a presenter from Moss Adams to walk you through of the proposed internal audit report. And also Jonathan will conclude with the staff recommendation.
Okay. Welcome.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Colleen Rosillas from Moss Adams. I'm your engagement partner for your internal audit, which means that I provide quality assurance over everything we do for the city and manage the program. So I'm here tonight to recommend the program for this current fiscal year, which has been approved by the Audit Committee. As you all know, we have been retained as your outsourced internal auditor. We focus across the city to reduce risk, improve internal controls. We look at efficiency and effectiveness and compliance, and ultimately, we want to help to align city practices with best practice. All of our work is completed under industry standards. For you all, most of the time, that means AICPA consulting standards. When we conduct a performance audit, we do that under generally accepted government audit standards. This is a graphic from the Institute for Internal Auditors, and I think it's nice to share with a city council, just to remind us that we all have a role in reducing risk, improving controls, and improving performance across the city. So it's your job to receive our reports, to direct management, and to direct me to conduct audits and to look into items across the city. It's management's job to implement recommendations, to identify areas where we might need to dig in, and then we provide that independent and objective assurance across the city. Over on the right-hand side, you'll also see your external auditor. So they look at your financial statements to see if they're complete and accurate, and occasionally, we all chat about you. Don't be worried. So internal audit, we do a number of things. First, we conduct enterprise assessments. That really takes a look across the city, both from a controls perspective and from a risk and compliance perspective, so that we can develop our work program. We take information from city employees, management, from residents. We look at your performance metrics and data, and we also monitor the city's fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. Through that, we identify our opportunities to improve performance and reduce risks and improve compliance and controls. And then we also work on tracking and reporting. So we look at how well the city has implemented our recommendations. We work on a validation process, as well as potential corrective actions. And that could include, if you had external audit findings as well. We've been your internal auditor since 2020. Since then, we have completed eight projects. So we completed an enterprise risk assessment right in December of 2020 in fiscal year 21. We've done two internal controls projects and five performance projects. We've also, if you may recall, last year, we took a look at all of the fiscal policies that the city had in place. And we've been working with the finance department to review those policies, and we've been passing those back and forth to make sure that those align with best practice, and we provide recommendations so that they can be more efficient and effective. So far, out of those eight reports, we've delivered 52 recommendations, so not too bad. You all also received training this year on your fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. We opened up that hotline not that long ago. We've received six reports to date. We are also, you'll notice at the bottom, we have to come under recommendations validated. We're working with city staff on a process to report back to the Audit Committee and ultimately to all of you, to actually validate that our recommendations have been implemented. So it's not of much value if we just provide you reports and they sit on the shelf. So our goal is to have city staff work in collaboration with us to identify a process that works, that's simple and transparent, so that we can show that our recommendations have been implemented, and if not, why not? So for this year, we have two major projects. I'm actually going to go bottom up. So we always have a line item. That's for attending meetings, preparing reports, collaborating with staff, managing your fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, and that's just sort of ongoing. And then as a result of some of the policy work that we did with finance, management is really interested, and we very much support looking at city policies across the board. Look at every department, inventory all of the city policies, and identify those gaps, and then give you all a prioritized list so we can update that. Without policies, we can't hold our team accountable, and so it's a really great way to reduce risk, and as well as improve internal controls across all functions of the city. And then finally, you may recall from our prior enterprise risk assessment, it's best practice to conduct those every three years. And so we are three years into our program, so it's time again. As well as we conducted that last one, and we delivered it to you in 2020, so quite a bit has changed, not just the external place, right? But also, we've got a different council, we've got a lot of different folks in management positions. It's a good idea to take a look at where the city is today. That will help us to both build our work program for the next three to five years, but it will also help you all to understand exactly where the city is at this point in time, so we can help to manage and mitigate that risk. And management and council can work together to help to prioritize in alignment with your budgeting process, in alignment with your strategic planning process. In addition to that, we, those of you who have served on the Audit Committee may recall, we typically provide the Audit Committee with a long list of projects. And so one of the projects that we had discussed at Audit Committee was to conduct a performance audit of grants management. There's a lot of state and federal dollars out there right now. And so there was a discussion on the Audit Committee that if there was additional budget this fiscal year, that they would support also conducting a grants management performance audit. Staff has a little, a few more comments about that. We're comfortable delivering our program as approved within budget or adding on to the project. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jonathan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. As Colleen just stated, there is a difference between what was being proposed tonight, which is staff's recommendation to not include the grants management performance audit, which was approved by the Audit Committee as a project back in July. The key, the difference that staff is not recommending this, there's a couple. First being the finance department's workload capacity to take on this project, especially when we have a new external auditor this year, which is quite a bit workload-heavy. A lot more documents need to be provided to them. They need to understand our internal controls and see if they can trust those. Secondly, they, we are also possibly having a new financial and human resources enterprise, enterprise resource planning software, which is also work-heavy, work-heavy on the department. Lastly, this would also require additional appropriations and a contract amendment to Moss Adams' current contract. So we would have to return, if you were to choose to include this project into the work plan, we would have to return in October with a third contract amendment and a resolution for a budget adjustment. So at this time, that ends our presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. So I'm bringing back to the council for questions for five minutes before we open up for public comment. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Chow?
Yeah. Hi. Thank you for being here. So I, I think, can I borrow Peggy's slide from, you, Peggy pointed out a public comment earlier, there were four missing items on the investment report. And tonight, Agenda Item Five, there were incorrect or missing input in the report. So I'm wondering, in your policy gap analysis, what the city can do so we adopt administrative policy so that this report have these essential elements? And what you guys have recommended in terms of, could Peggy please show your slide?
I don't, I don't think that this topic is agendized for discussion at this time.
But that's what I would, wouldn't, isn't this a part of internal audit?
You could certainly ask the auditor if they will be looking at this as part of internal audit.
Yeah. Or maybe that has, maybe a policy has already been analyzed, I would like to know. Or they could propose additional audits into that area. So could I get the slide from Peggy to show?
Through to Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that we're on target. The, the action before council tonight is to approve the internal audit program, not to specify the exact policies that potentially may or may not be in the program.
Yeah. But then if there, if, I think this item has missing, missing data from treasurer's report has been brought up a few times. So if that's something that could be addressed in next year, and that's something I hope to be included for next year's program. Thank you.
May I have the auditor answer the question? Is this part of the auditing process that you would recommend, or what? Because I don't think the staff have, have a time to answer the questions yet.
Sure. So we don't provide quality assurance over agenda items or the treasurer's report or things like that. When we look at policies, so for example, policies for how things go on the agenda and things like that, something like multiple rounds of review might be included in that policy.
Okay. Thank you.
So as pointed out here, there is no, there was no sign-off by the treasurer? Is that something part of your gap analysis, that this should be included as the process for approving treasurer's report?
So I would say that's a little bit more at the procedure level than the policy level, and that is departmental procedure. I would think, I would actually turn to the department to ask about that.
So
So this is not part of the internal audit, you mean?
Just to answer this question, this is actually approved internally. You may not see that there is an initial on the report. Internally, we do approve it, and there is a formal process.
But in term, as an administrative policy, the city could say that a treasurer's report should include these parts, right?
I, I think the auditor has answered the question that these, these procedural items are outside the scope of the audit.
So are there, then are there internal audit programs that you can recommend that would address these issues of missing items on reports?
Sure. So when we conduct the enterprise risk assessment, just like last time, we'll interview each of you. We interview all department heads, as well as folks in key roles across the city. So accuracy of data that is presented to council, completeness of data so council can make decisions, is absolutely a question that we'll discuss with each of you as part of our risk assessment process.
So then now we identify the risk right now. How do you suggest to address this risk so it doesn't happen again, missing data in complete report?
I would recommend that the city take a look at their procedure and ensure that multiple reviews are made before things go to council.
And signatures of approval, approval versus, and maybe date of approval.
And that there's a clear, shared expectation of what is to be presented to council.
Through to Mayor, if I may, I would like to take this conversation offline. We will definitely work with Ms. Griffin to address the issues that she brought up, but I don't believe this is part of the scope for the internal audit program. That's before councils tonight.
Okay. So I think we're still on the comments period, right? Okay. So
Councilmember questions.
Okay. So let's ask questions. Do you have questions, Councilmember Moore?
Yes. Thank you, Colleen. I was wondering, is there a way or a policy that might fit under this, the enterprise risk assessment, which could basically request that departments who, which are aware of having long-term contracts, going back to the, to the vendor issue, where they have perhaps already exceeded the $200,000 mark on a contract and needed to, per our purchasing policy, go out for bid? Is there some way that there could be a policy written up to, you know, request a twice-annual review of, of contracts that are, that are ongoing, somehow so it gets basically flagged earlier, rather than when there's some changes that are, that are planned?
Sure. So I have two answers to that question. The first is during the risk assessment, we absolutely do look at procurement and contracting. As you recall, we did a very detailed procurement efficiency study not that long ago for you all. Contract management, because it's decentralized, is obviously a risk area, so we dig into that. Second, as has been mentioned, the procurement policy is something that is being worked on, and we have actually looked at drafts and talked to staff about that. So that's something that's in progress, and I don't really have any concerns about that.
Any other questions from council? If not, I'll open up for public comment. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor. We have
I'm so sorry, Vice Mayor Mohan, I didn't pay attention. Vice Mayor Mohan, you're up. Sorry, I didn't look at the hand. Thank you. Sorry about that. Not used to looking at hands.
No, I wanted to make a comment on the additional Audit Committee recommendation to, for Moss Adams to work on the grant management performance audit. At that time, we didn't have the information that we do now about the impact to staff and, you know, the, the additional work that it would involve. And, and really, when, when the Audit Committee sort of focused on the grants management performance audit review, it was, we just wanted to highlight the importance of the grant, not so much the management, I suppose it was management, but securing grants for the city. And while grants management performance audit could involve that, our real focus was to make sure that we use all the opportunities we can get to secure grants. After having talked to city staff, there is, you know, and you, you heard the comments that there are new, there's some changes for, for the next year. So it does not make sense to have a, a grants management audit. But in my opinion, I think we do need to continue to focus on securing grants. And I don't know what the solution is. Maybe I can suggest that the city staff come back in a few months and, and see if we can get a consultant, or if we can come up with a, a way to enhance our ability to, to secure grants for the city, and, and, and see where it leads us. So that, that was really my recommendation after I learned that the grants management audit itself was not appropriate, or was not something that we could do at this point. That was my comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. Is that a question for our staff to answer, or is just a comment? Is your question to ask our staff?
Sure. It is a question. Is, is there a possibility that we could get a, a grant writing or a grant seeking, I don't know what the term is, to, to enhance that whole side of city operations?
Senator Mayor, Vice Mayor, so the city could definitely look, look into recruiting a all-time, a full-time grants writer to augment the grants that we don't have right now, but it's not part of the current city budget operation, but we could definitely look into it.
Okay. Thank you. If there are no more questions, I'm going to open up for public comment.
Yes, Mayor, we have received two speaker cards in Community Hall, and I see no hands raised on Zoom. So we will start with Jean Bedore, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm Cupertino resident. I am speaking to you today to support the recommendation of the audit committee to fund a grants management performance audit in addition to the two other two Moss Adams projects. Grants management has been problematic for years. There really hasn't been centralized oversight. I seem to remember a report back in April or May showing grants that the city had applied for, some of which were received and some of which were still in process. There are there were hundreds of thousands of dollars on that list. Given the city's financial situation, increasing revenue should be a top priority. Though specific to projects, grants can be alternative sources of revenue, reserving general fund monies for operational expenses. I would urge the city to pursue an aggressive grants program. Furthermore, expand your horizons beyond city staff to partner with organizations and members of the community. You have a great opportunity with the new executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, Deb Feng, former city manager, and she has excellent expertise in nonprofits and government organizations. More grants, however, mean that the city's grants management program needs to be more effective, hence the need for an audit program. I understand that the finance staff sources may be stretched very thin with the new external auditor and a change in enterprise software, which is always challenging. Conversions are never transparent and are always more time consuming than anticipated. However, couldn't grant management be handled elsewhere in the organization? The cost of $35,000 for a grants audit is a reasonable investment for future grants. Moss Adams has done excellent work as an internal auditor, and I support their work. Don't be penny wise and pound foolish. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean, and next we have Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff and Moss Adams. I want to thank all of you for doing the audits year after year. I think the city is incrementally improving in many different areas. My concern tonight is during oral communications, an employee spoke about harassment, abuse, and all those things I would have thought would have been reported in the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, but only having six reports doesn't match what he explained. And so I'm asking you, before you add the grants, fix this. Put the effort in pursuing it, investigating it, and making sure that whatever the problem is gets resolved. The city's employees are the city's best assets. And last time, you had two local unions up here begging for money. You need to listen to the employees, support them, and please investigate this from a third party, not from the city itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. I am going to close the public comment and put it back to council for comments. Do we have any comments from council? Councilmember? Moore?
Thank you. I do have a question for the city attorney or the city manager regarding the the comments that were made during oral communications. And do you have some recommendations on what with regards to? We do have the internal audit program, it has fraud, waste, and abuse. What do you suggest we do as a council when we hear information like that?
Which which comments were you referring to, Councilmember Moore?
Regarding there was a harassment comment from one of the employees.
Yeah, so that's a confidential matter.
Okay. Okay, it was made during oral communications publicly.
It is a confidential matter.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I'm going to take a few minutes to make my comments. I understand we have public and we have comments from a lot of different sources. I do agree, any personnel is a confidential matter. And I am very wary of certain comments that make made without our response from our staff and being categorized as risk. So I would like to really trust, I think we should need to build trust. So when we have comments, I would like our staff to have the opportunity to respond. And I really agree with our auditor that expectations needs to be set. What are the expectations of the council of our staff or our public of our staff? I think we probably have to make clearer expectations, whether it's still a signature needed or is it being audited internally? So I do think that's a expectation, sort of a procedure instead of a policy. And another question I have is, if I hear correctly, you do believe that you don't have any procurement concerns or procurement policies? Because we've been going through it, is that what you have expressed?
Yeah, I'm not going to provide assurance tonight over your procurement policy, but as you recall, we just did last year procurement operational review. That policy has been really dug into, and so it's pretty up to date. We're continuing to iterate on it. And so that's not an area where I would be really concerned about there being policy or procedure gaps.
Thank you. And when we pass the we have the ethics hotline reports, I understand a third party is analyzing it and would alert if something really happens. Is that still happening?
Yes, correct. So we have a third party provider, the hotline is anonymous. If folks choose, then we triage the information. We collaborate with the city attorney on a regular basis on the reports that do come in as to how we choose to investigate or how we dispatch those among staff.
Okay, thank you. I just want to emphasize that is a third party analysis and.
Yes, and that's in the city's policy, yes.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Chow, followed by Councilmember Moore.
So just to clarify, the third party is working with Moss Adams to monitor this, right?
Yes, correct.
So which item among the three that's proposed for next year? This falls under is is the ongoing?
Yes.
Services? So this does include the the monitoring of the fraud hotline? And if there is any issue, when will? I know that a lot of issues are confidential. Could we get anonymous report on this kind of? Either it's reported through the hotline or not through the hotline. But I think it's important for us to know what issues were reported or being investigated.
So under California state law, whistleblower hotlines are confidential under state law, so we have to abide by law. The other piece is that we don't want to compromise any potential civil or criminal investigation. So everyone who is involved is on a need to know basis until something is closed, at which point you may be involved. So we absolutely have had executive session with council when you are need to know, but it's much better for us to keep that as closely held as possible so that we do not compromise any investigation.
Definitely, but then could we at least know the category of violation that's reported?
Yeah, that's in the actually provided to the audit committee on a quarterly basis in our reports.
Okay, thank you. And another question regarding grants management. I think the audit may not increase the opportunity to apply for grants, right? I remember the city was trying to hire someone. Did the Public Works Department hire someone specifically for grant application? I think it's important to identify the opportunity and submit the application in time.
So through the mayor, we had a consultant who was actively looking for grants possibility and opportunity, whether it's for Public Works or other departments.
So that consultant is still on contract working with the city?
The contract, the consultant is no longer on contract because we did not see too much fruit coming out of the consultant's work.
Okay, so I think the audit of grants management may or may not be effect provide direct increase in in grants. But if that consultant did not work out, what do you recommend? Besides the audit program, what things the city could do to increase our grant application opportunity?
So if I'm hearing your question right, you're asking what the results of the audit would be ultimately?
Not exactly. I think I understand the staff recommendation is not to add this item, which I respect. So I'm asking for a recommendation of what alternatives the city could do besides the audit that can provide more immediate direct result of getting more grants.
Sure, so during our risk assessment, we look at grants because that's obviously a big decentralized process, too, where there's potentially risk. So you'll get some more information that we'll just have, you know, more of a high level when we complete the risk assessment and some recommendations there. Your city manager, many staff are members of ICMA, members of GFOA. Best practices are out there. So you don't necessarily need us to say these are your best practices and here are the gaps. But sometimes it does help to have a prioritized list of those recommendations if you don't have capacity to do that.
So the city manager's office could, if there is staff resource, to prioritize looking for grants? Because that change every year, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Moore, you have a couple of minutes.
Okay, so I was just wondering, I'm trying to flip back into the audit committee's presentation, which they received. Did did Moss Adams suggest doing the the grants management performance audit? And then the audit committee deliberated on that and decided to pass that recommendation on to the council?
We suggested the program that's before you. It's actually the audit committee, there was an audit committee member who suggested we add grants management, and the committee agreed. So it didn't necessarily come from us.
Okay, so there was perhaps a menu of of things that they could go through similar to.
We always give a long list and discuss where you are, right? We always want to bite off more than we can chew, but we're resource constrained local government, so.
Okay, okay, the concern being the balancing the staff needs and then the financial needs on that on the outside. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I I was, oh, Councilmember Frue.
So two quick things. I just echo some comments that the vice mayor made earlier with respect to this item because I also sit on the audit committee. I think that for us at the time, we did not have knowledge of exactly how much additional staff time that this particular item would provoke. So that wasn't a consideration for us when the recommendation was made. The other is that it felt like even at the time, at least from my perspective, that this was a sort of nice to have, not something that was absolutely mission critical. The other thing I just want to point out is that the the item in question is not whether or not we would pursue grants as a matter of policy. This is whether we need to have an audit program for our grants management, right? That is a different consideration. I think that almost certainly staff are very well aware that as our budget becomes more constrained, we're going to have to go and find sources of funding for all sorts of things from other places. And that grants management will be necessary in order to make that all work. So at some point in the future, I don't want us to lose sight of this. When it becomes a situation where we have lots of grants and this becomes a serious source of risk, that we should probably pursue an audit at that point in time.
Thank you, Councilmember Frue.
Just a short, oh, I thought I had a few seconds left. Okay.
Vice Mayor Mohan, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
If not, I think all of you has used our five minutes. So do we have any?
Mayor, I think Councilmember Chow has about 40 seconds if she would like to use her time.
Okay, sorry about that, 40 seconds.
So I'd just like to request that the city manager put the fraud hotline report to the council report so far so that we have that information for the public. So people don't have to look through audit committee agenda item. Thank you.
Is that, does that need an answer?
I'll work with the consultant to include that.
Okay. I apologize, I didn't time it well, well, and so I think you still have 20 seconds if you want to.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have motion and a second, any more discussions? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Frue?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Aye.
Mayor Way?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Do we need a break before we go into? So let's get a five minute break before we go to the next action item. Be back about 8:16.
Let's move to item number, action number nine, adoption of amendments to the Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 9.22, expanding existing property maintenance requirements in accordance with California Health and Safety Code 17970-5. And do we have a staff report?
Mayor Way, we do have a staff presentation. I would like to turn this over to Community Development Director Ben Fu.
Thank you, City Manager Wu. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, Benjamin Fu, Georgia Community Development with me tonight. We have Monica Diaz as our senior code enforcement officer. Tonight will be her first in person presentation before you. She was she came on board during the COVID pandemic. Behind me is our city's building official, Sean Hatch. This, I think, is also his first in person before. His last one was before the pandemic as well. So we have the whole team here in support and will be here to answer some questions. With that, I will hand it off to Ms. Diaz for a very brief presentation. We'll be here for questions, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Monica, as been indicated. I am one of your senior code enforcement officers in community development. I will be speaking to you tonight about some changes that took place at the state level concerning California Health and Safety Code and substandard housing enforcement. The state of California passed a mandate that requires cities and counties to respond and address complaints of substandard housing conditions, known as Assembly Bill 838. It was signed in September of 2021 and took effect July of 2022. The state law, which sets what and how a housing standard supply, is not something new, only the requirement that cities and counties enforce them, as well as some specifics that speak to the manner in which they are to be enforced. Cupertino was one of many cities across the state which did not do so prior to the AB's passing. This is a new service being provided to the community. In Cupertino, code enforcement focuses on protecting the community by addressing issues that affect the safety and well being of the public. Code enforcement responds to complaints and addresses reported conditions on a reactive basis. Standards set by the by these California safety, health, and safety codes specifically do not apply to all properties, only tenant occupied properties. Specifically, what does AB 838 mean for us? The city must take complaints of this nature, respond soon, and there is a the statute dictates how soon that is. And it's specifically tied to how quickly we respond to final permit inspections for the building division. Here, that means 24 hours. We must investigate, inspect, and assess these violations, provide an inspection report, which is what we call a notice of violation to property owners, thereby informing the property owners, and provide copies of these case documents. We cannot receive state reimbursement for this. We can't not respond, charge fees for the initial inspection, the inspection report, or associated documents to affected parties. We can't refuse communication to the affected parties either. Ensuring rental housing stock meets these minimum standards is a health, health, life, safety, and quality of life issue. Following are some examples of these conditions. This is an interior wall water leak that caused water damage. Unsafe electrical, or also known as an unpermitted electrical alteration. Here we have a combination. This is what started as a minor roof leak, combined with a faulty mechanical equipment, i.e. the fan in the bathroom. i.e. the fan in the bathroom, and led to this moisture damage. Stairways such as this on the left side provide what is known in our fire code in California as proper ingress and egress. If they are unsafe, dilapidated, they can cause an unsafe condition thereby being deemed a dilapidated structure because of improper maintenance. On the right side, we have a combination violation also. It's an unpermitted addition and change of use that happened to be inside of a commercial structure. Staff recommends that council adopt the proposed amendments to this chapter to codify property owners' obligation to maintain housing stock free of substandard housing conditions and to allow the city to recover some of the costs of enforcement incurred as a result of this AB, to the extent permitted by state law, of course. If this first reading and adoption takes place tonight, the next step would be to bring it before you for a second reading on October 17th. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We like, thank you, Monica. And we'd like to open up for council questions, please. Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Chow.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation and the photographs were really helpful. First, were those units within Cupertino?
Yes.
Okay, and I was wondering, is there a place where you can get kind of a comprehensive list of what would qualify? For instance, if you have untempered glass within 18 inches of the floor in a rental unit? Or broken glass, broken screens, things of that nature? Or perhaps a building hasn't been painted in 20 years?
To answer succinctly, there are various codes that would apply to the scenarios that you depicted in those examples, particularly to this item. There is a list of items that are specific to substandard housing and that can be found in the staff report under Exhibit D, as in David, which is California Health and Safety Code, Section 179 to 0.3.
Okay, thank you. And is there, will there be some outreach to the public? So that they are aware, if they are living in a place that needs to have repairs made, that they know to contact the city and without any fear of retaliation, perhaps? So that more people know because there are some substandard units within the city that I would want the people living there to be aware of what their rights are.
Specifically, what we do is we work closely with the Building Division. Usually, people come to us and that's what we would need to do. Not only because we need to vet the complaint, but because these are interior dwelling inspections, we need consent from the occupying property from an authorized person. So because of that, usually the individuals that are suffering from these conditions or being affected by them reach out and ask for help and that's how we hear of them and are able to respond. We've also partnered, of course, with Project Sentinel and they have referred a number of them to us in connection with those services.
So, Councilmember Chow?
Okay, I think I have similar questions. Thank you for the photos and that's sad to know those are properties in Cupertino. And the staff report says that 10 properties have been identified. So how would a tenant know where to report or even what condition is qualified so they can report?
In the case of the 10 cases that we've had, it usually begins with a lack of communication or response on behalf of the landlord. They reach out, complain to the appropriate individual. They're either ignored or not responded to in a way that they feel is right and that's when they start to call around and ask for help. And that's how they end up with us and we're able to respond, conduct the inspection, and follow through with the normal enforcement process.
I'm curious, is it possible to include as part of a rental agreement this information about where such violation could be reported and what qualifies? The code that you quote could be included in the rental agreement? Could the city require that in your rental agreement?
I will have to defer to our city attorney on that because rental agreements are a civil matter between two private parties.
Yeah, I mean, the city generally does not regulate rental contracts.
So this bill also does not include any enforcement for notification or?
Well, this, through the mayor, so this is amending our municipal code to make sure that the state law is now becoming part of our municipal code. I don't know if that needs to be added to the lease agreement. And to kind of back up on some of what Monica mentioned earlier, the 10 cases from last year, they were reported through 311. So through investigations, working directly with staff, we're able to correct these substandard conditions.
Oh, through 311 and/or Project Sentinel, which provides tenant, I think tenant landlord negotiation. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Fruin?
Just very quickly, going back to the fact that in the first year of implementation, there were 10 properties that needed some sort of work. Do you expect that to be fairly normal going forward? Do you think that that reflects perhaps things that had not previously been brought to your attention? Or, you know, so is this a high number, a low number, if you have any estimate?
In short, I don't.
Okay, that's fine.
It's hard to gauge.
Councilmember Fruin, it's our first year, so that's, give us a couple more years, we'll have better data for you.
Great, thanks. And to add to that, through the mayor, this is also the first year after COVID. So we will continue to monitor and track and hopefully this is about the average, but really we would not know.
So, Councilmember Chow, you have follow-up questions?
Are these 10 properties below market rate housing in Cupertino? Or they are market rate, but probably they have low rent, I suppose.
Not that I'm aware of specifically, and that's not part of the questioning that goes into these investigations.
Thank you.
So these are on complaint basis, right? Code enforcement is on complaint basis. The city doesn't go out and circulate and make inspections?
No, we are a reactive division.
Okay, so that could be a question or a comment that I think the city could advocate better on our Cupertino 311. That is a very direct line for, that reaches the city staff that can get, be taken care of. So thank you. Vice Mayor Mohan, your hand is raised, I see that. Thank you.
Oh, you're muted, Vice Mayor.
This is probably a question for city staff. The staff report says that there's not much of an impact in terms of fiscal impact or staffing impact. We don't really know that at this time, do we? Because is there a provision that, are we just expected to absorb these additional responsibilities? And come what may?
Vice Mayor, through the mayor, if I may, Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. Staffing resource is always a concern for us. This is a new code change for us, so we don't really know whether that 10 cases is an average, is a high, it's a low. We do our best to respond to every single one of the complaints on a very timely basis. But as of now, we don't have much more data to provide back to you. We can certainly come back, do an update as we get more data. I will also say that our website will be updated as well with this new information. Some of the community members also may have seen our staff at the Day and Night Festival last weekend. So we're trying to actively be out there and kind of educate the public in a more passive way, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. If no more questions, I'd like to open up a public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, I have one speaker card for Community Hall from Peggy Griffin. And I see no hands raised on Zoom. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff. I am glad to see that this is happening and I encourage you to allow people to use the 311 mechanism. I saw that it has a property concerns as the topic and then you can go down and say other. My question is, if it's anonymous, do you even know what property or where it's at to contact somebody? If somebody is scared? And does it apply to Airbnb and BMR? I'm assuming the BMR, yes. And I ask that for BMR, that possibly when someone gets their unit, could you give them that list and how they can report issues if they need to? Many years ago, there is an area in Cupertino, disabled people, and their elevator was out and had complained. So, but you know, when you are in a place where you're lucky to have the place to begin with, you're scared to report anything. So we need to protect people. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Mayor, I see no further requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to council for comments. And do we have any more comments from council?
Thank you. I'd like to hear a reminder about Project Sentinel and do they assist in a retaliation concern situation? Would they be helpful with that? I mean, what would happen if you became aware that there was some kind of retaliation on a renter for having something reported and then needing to make what could end up being expensive repairs for water damage or something like that?
Through the mayor, if I may, Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. Project Sentinel is staffed to deal with tenant landlord mediation. So that's our recommendation as a first step for all tenants to report situation to Project Sentinel. And then through our outreach efforts, then if it does not come to fruition, then we'll hear about it and we'll go through our enforcement process.
Pardon, through the mayor, what would be your recommendation for a tenant who now has seen Attachment D, which has the great list of many different repairs which could need to be made? Okay, so they've seen it and they, they're, noticed a few things, are problematic with their unit. Maybe they've asked their landlord, nothing's happened. Then what would you suggest is their next step?
Yeah, so obviously first, like you mentioned, through the mayor, obviously, as you mentioned, first step is to contact the landlord. If you're not getting a response, then your next step is you can also contact the city as well. If you haven't had an opportunity to talk to Project Sentinel, we'll certainly direct you to that as an option. But you should certainly contact the city for that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Chow?
Does the city have a webpage with this kind of tenant help information such as Project Sentinel and this kind of violation, what to do with it? And so just curious, if someone Google Cupertino tenant help, what would they get?
Yes, through the mayor, Councilmember Chow. Our city does have on the housing website, as well as the code enforcement website, direct these services, provide these services, the contact services to the public. So we do have that and it will be updated to reflect, once it's adopted tonight, it will be updated to reflect tonight's decision.
And it does include about how to report through Cupertino 311?
Yes, it has all the reporting information in there, yes.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Sorry, I have one more question and that is, going back to the idea, the concept of a unit which has a lot of water damage, maybe it's a duplex, something of that nature, has a lot of water damage and the renters need to move out and the repairs are made and then someone else, the owner decides at that point they're going to raise the rent and someone else moves in. Is, one, is that foreseeable that that could happen? And then, two, is there any way that the city could track if, while we're having the repairs made, we're actually having displaced renters because of implementing this?
Through the mayor, I would sure hope that there is better coordination when something like that does happen. But that is unfortunately sort of a private matter between the landlord and the tenant and depends on the situation, the agreements with that, that could be a scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any more discussions? Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, so in case the substandard condition happens after a natural disaster, how much time the landlord has to rectify the situation to improve the standard? Yeah, so is there provision for that after a natural disaster? Probably people shouldn't report immediately or we shouldn't cite them immediately.
Through the mayor, if we can look into this and get back to Councilmember Chow afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
If there aren't any further questions, I was wondering if I could move the recommended action?
Have a motion. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Second, but Councilmember Fruin, any further discussions?
Through the mayor, I'd like to modify my motion and say that I move that the clerk read the Title of Ordinance Number 23-2250, that further reading of the ordinance be waived and that the city council conduct the first reading of the ordinance by title only.
Accepted.
Okay, it's being moved and seconded if there are no, okay. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Shall I read the title of the ordinance?
Yes.
So this is the first reading of Ordinance Number 23-2250 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending City Code, Chapter 9.22 of Title IX, Health and Sanitation, to prohibit substandard housing conditions. Now, proceed with roll call. Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Aye.
Mayor Wei?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thank you, Ben and Monica and Sean over there. Okay, let's move to item number nine. Amendments to Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 5.50 of Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Regulating the Sale of Tobacco Products. We do have a recommended action. May I have staff report by City Attorney Chris Jensen?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me share my screen. So I do have a brief presentation for you. The lead on this project was Senior Management Analyst Astrid Robles. She was unable to be here tonight, so I'm just presenting on her behalf. She was supported by the City Attorney's Office on this project. So just some brief background, in November 29, the city adopted an ordinance requiring tobacco retailer products to obtain a permit from the city. That ordinance is and has been enforced by the Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health at no cost to the city. On September 13, 2022, the County Board of Supervisors approved an update to the ordinance regarding enforcement changes to the tobacco retailer permit program. The changes to that ordinance include, are aimed at improving enforcement and reducing retailer violations by increasing fines and strengthening consequences for frequent violations. If the city is going to continue its partnership with the county pertaining to the administration and enforcement, Cupertino must also adopt policy changes similar to those adopted by the county. Those updates are outlined in the staff report and are in the redline draft provided in Attachment B. There has been communication to retailers about these potential changes to the program. And so staff is recommending that the council adopt the proposed revisions to align our ordinance with the county to allow DEH to continue to enforce the ordinance. And so the recommended action is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance. the first reading of the ordinance as set forth in the staff report. And if council does introduce the ordinance at this meeting, it will be brought back for a second reading on October 17. That concludes my staff report. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, City Attorney Jensen. Questions from council member, please? Councilmember Fruin?
You mentioned that there had been outreach to retailers. Do we have any sense of what the feedback was from them, if any?
It was recent. I'm not aware of any feedback. But I could certainly follow up with you after the meeting if there's any information to provide.
Great.
Councilmember Chow?
So since the adoption of the tobacco policy, do we, have we gotten any communication from the county enforcement or report or of any violation?
I'm not aware of the reporting process.
Could you get back to us on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
If there are no questions from the council, let's open up for public comment.
Mayor, I have no requests to speak or nor are there, do I see any hands raised on Zoom?
Okay, seeing none for public comments, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to council for either a motion or a further discussion, comments. If no comments, can I entertain a motion for the first reading, please?
I'll make a motion to, for, to approve the recommendation and read, for the city clerk to conduct the first reading. And move that the staff read the title of the ordinance, number?
23-2250.
2250, that?
One.
2251? Okay, that further reading, 2251, that further reading of the ordinance be waived and that the city council conduct the first reading of the ordinance by title only.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's being moved and seconded. May I have your city clerk read it and then we can roll call, please?
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance number 23-2251, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending Chapter 5.50 to Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations to regulate the sale of tobacco products. I'll conduct roll call. Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Fruin?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Aye.
Mayor Way?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now we are moving to number nine, revisions to city of Cupertino ethics policy, the recommended action. And then may I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is me again. Let me find my Zoom and again, share my screen. So this, the item before council today is a request for input on updates to the city's current ethics policy. I'll start with some background on how we got to this point. So in November 2019, the city council adopted Ethics Code for elected and appointed officials. That code was rescinded in January 2019. And in January 2020, the city council adopted the current ethics policy. That ethics policy was identified as an area of concern in the December 2022 civil grand jury report. That report noted that the 2020 ethics policy is less comprehensive than the policy it replaced and ignored the subject of council manic interference found in the rescinded version. And the grand jury also found that the rationale for creating the policy was with generic ethics goals and ethics goals and no enforcement provisions was to avoid accountability. Based on these findings, the grand jury recommended that the city consider revisions to its ethics policy and strengthening the policy to align with best practices. Moving forward into this year, in February 2023, the council adopted the city council procedures manual. That procedures manual addressed some of the concerns identified in the grand jury report by including standards for council member conduct, including standards for decorum and council staff relations. However, there were other areas that are addressed by the ethics policy that were not directly addressed in the procedures report. Consistent with that, in May 2023, when the city council was considering the fact finding report prepared by the city attorney's office, that report recommended that the city revise its current ethics policy using the 2018 Ethics Code as a recommended starting point. The city council considered the report at that time and directed staff to return to council with an agenda item to consider revisions to the current ethics policy consistent with the recommendations by the city attorney's office and specifically the outside investigator, Linda Dobby. The ethics policy was also addressed in the July 2023 Enterprise Leadership Assessment prepared by the city's internal auditor, Moss Adams. That assessment recommended that the city continue to review its ethics policy to ensure that it lines with best practices and also included a specific recommendation to identify, to address identified gaps in political reform acts compliance among city commissioners. The Enterprise Leadership Assessment concluded that the city should strengthen its internal processes for tracking and holding elected and appointed officials accountable to timely completion of Form 700 disclosures. So this item is responding to those concerns in council's prior direction. I'll start by giving some introduction as background. This is also provided in the staff report, but just a summary of the goals of municipal ethics policies. And as listed here, you know, the goals are to encourage high standards of behavior by public officials over and above the requirements, the minimum requirements established by state law. To increase public confidence in institutions, to assist public officials with decision making. And then just to note that there are rules and values based ethics policies. Both the 2018 and 2020 ethics policies include both rules and values based components. And it's common for ethics policies in local jurisdictions to have a mix of rules, meaning prescriptive standards for conduct and values, which are more aspirational and sort of should, are intended to guide the spirit of participation in city governance. There are some questions for council that, you know, I'd like to pose for council to consider tonight and to provide feedback if you choose. So one question is who should be covered by the policy? Whether it should apply to elected officials only, to elected and appointed officials, or to elected and appointed officials and city staff? You know, what value should be reflected in the policy? And should there be any rules beyond the requirement of state ethics law included? How should the policy be enforced? Should the policy include provisions for training and periodic review? For example, a refresh every three to five years? Prior to coming to council, the city did, the city staff did conduct outreach via a survey that was distributed through the city's various channels of communication. It was developed based on, based on a template from the Institute of Local Government. And the results of that survey are provided in your agenda packet. You'll see the general areas that were surveyed. And the survey both asked which of these topics were the most important, asked each responded to identify the foremost topics and then identified, asked a series of follow up questions about each of those topics. The topics bolded there were the four topics that ranked highest among survey respondents, integrity and honesty, responsibility and community service, fairness, and proper and efficient use of public resources. There was quite a diversity in responses, which, you know, reflects sort of how wide ranging this discussion could possibly be. But certainly that, those survey results are provided for council to consider in providing input on moving forward with the policy. So as I noted here, we are here to seek further input before bringing a final policy back for adoption by council. The recommended action is to re-adopt the 2018 Code of Ethics as a starting point for ethics policy revisions, to incorporate revisions to ensure consistency with the recently adopted council procedure manual, and also to incorporate the internal auditor's recommendations regarding compliance with FPVC rules. Council also has the opportunity to provide direction on additional revisions to the, using the 20, again, recommending using the 2018 policy as a starting point. If council does provide direction to move forward with revisions, we will return to council with a final policy and a resolution adopting the policy. With that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, City Attorney Jensen. We're open up for council questions, please. So I'll start with the question. The provision that added the FPVC compliance, was it because there were incidents that we have commissioners that have not fired Form 700 after one or two years being commissioned?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact length of time, but yes, there were incidents where there was noncompliance and difficulty obtaining compliance.
Okay, so in the new ethics policy, how do we enforce it if that happens?
So one option would be for, to have, you know, after a certain length of time, the immediate suspension or removal of the commissioner from service. So that would be one option. The second option would be to have, you know, to have a directive for staff to bring that to the council's attention so council could consider the removal. So either of those would be potentially effective enforcement mechanisms. One is, obviously takes more of the council's time.
Okay, thank you. And more questions from Councilmember Fruin, please?
So part of the current work program includes an update to the commissioner's handbook. Is that considered as part of this process?
I believe the update to the commissioner's handbook will be coming to council for fourth quarter of this calendar year.
Okay.
Councilmember Chow, please?
So, does the commissioner need to take the AB 1234 training?
I believe so, yes.
They also need to do that? Okay, and so have they taken those training?
So I would defer to the clerk's office. I mean, the clerk's office does track training. And generally, again, if we have a training issue or if we have an issue with Form 700 compliance, the clerk's office actively monitors that and where there are issues with, for example, with the Form 700, provides reminders to the commissioners.
Okay, and I believe we already have, in our municipal code, if attendance is below like 25%, they could be removed from the commission. So that could be a requirement for the Form 700?
So there is, there is a policy that automatically removes commissioners for attendance. We could, we could apply that policy for noncompliance with FPVC reporting requirements.
Okay, and AB 1234 possibly?
We could do the same for training as well.
And has this, 2000, I think in 2018, that handbook, that proposed Ethics Code wasn't sent to the commissioners for review? So has this one been sent to the commissioners for their feedback because they have to comply with it?
This has not been provided to the commissioners. There was a process for seeking public input. The commissioners will be asked for in book, input on the commissioner's handbook.
Have the liaisons informed the commissioners that this will be on the council agenda? So they could review it?
Not to my knowledge. But I would suggest that, you know, the council should set the ethics tone for the city.
But if the code would apply to commissioners, I would hope that we get feedback from commissioners before we set the policy.
So if council wants to provide direction to seek feedback from commissioners, that could be done before this is brought back for final adoption.
So another question is regarding one of the, I think, ethics policy. I'll bring up my slide later.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. There are no more questions from council? I would, oh, Councilmember Moore, please?
I'm curious what your intention was with the, having a difference between what was in the procedural manual and what is in the ethics policy? Because some topics seem to kind of overlap. And I'm also wondering how those two documents kind of fit together for us? That's, I have a number of questions.
Yeah, no, it's fair that the documents overlap. I think that's, it's common in many jurisdictions. I mean, the procedures manual was modeled on a number of different jurisdictions. And so all of those, all of those provisions are what are commonly found in council procedures manuals. I do agree that there is overlap between some of the provisions and then some provisions of really any ethics policy. But certainly if council does go in the direction of re-adopting some version of the 2018 ethics policy, there would be some areas that would just have to be changed to reconcile the two. And so that is part of the staff recommendation.
And through the mayor, there wasn't, to my knowledge, a clear, for lack of a better term, a clear punishment policy within the procedures manual? And it's being brought up here for the ethics policy? And the example being with regards to the Form 700? So in which document would that type of a policy be more appropriate to be placed?
That, that document, I think it would be appropriate to either place that in an ethics policy or in an updated commissioner's handbook. I think it could go in either place.
Okay, and through the mayor? Well, okay, that would be with regards to the commissioners. But I was doing some reviewing of conduct policy from San Jose and then also looking at Los Altos for their policy for admonition. And San Jose adds sanction and then they have censure. So where would that type of a policy best fit? In the procedures manual or in the ethics policy?
So the procedures, procedures manual, you know, applies to council. And so there, you know, there is, you know, an affirmation of the availability of censure in that manual, but not the level of detail that you see in some other policies. So that lives there with respect to council. Again, I could see, if council chooses to adopt an ethics policy that applies to commissioners as well as council, I could see some sign of admonition or censor, censor provision living in either the ethics policy or the commission's handbook, commissioner's handbook? You know, there are some overlap among these documents.
Okay, and then the question was whether or not we wanted to look at having the policy, I mean, the ethics, yeah, the ethics policy be just for the council, council and commissions, appointed officials and then appointed staff, I believe? And then, could you explain the different levels? And then what would we do if our goal was to expand this? I would expect that there already is a staff ethics policy. So we would want to probably look at that before we would be making any recommendations into that document. And again, I was looking at San Jose's lengthy policy document that they have.
Yeah, so I think that's a good question. I mean, so there are- I mean, so there are different models that are used. I mean, it could be council only, it could be council or commission, or it could be council, commission, or staff. I think with the last option, you know, council could definitely consider as part of returning with this for, you know, to direct the city manager to review the, you know, ethics policies that apply to staff and make sure that they are in alignment with best practices. And maybe in a lot of instances, it might make sense to have a separate policy just because, you know, the roles of staff and elected and appointed officials are so different. Not that they both shouldn't be held to high ethical standards, but just sort of the practical drafting of making sure that a policy makes sense for all of those categories can be challenging.
Thank you, council member Chow, followed by council member Furu, please.
So, I shared my screen. This is item number 3A under compliance of the 2018 Code of Ethics in terms of violations. So, this policy would, for any perceived infraction, this recommends to individual council member would report the other individual council member. If the offenses continue, it would be referred to the mayor or in private. So, doesn't this result in Brown Act violation for three council members to be conversing about this violation before two other council member even know about this conversation or the public? This seems problematic.
I'd have to look at that question before bringing the policy back for final adoption.
Okay, and also, this could be abused that one council member and the mayor could target, not saying that it would happen, but when we make a policy, we need to assume the worst case. So, the mayor and one council member might target another council member together. Not saying this mayor won't do it, but I think when we make policy, we, and that might all happen in private.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we want to avoid having, you know, Brown Act violations happen in private. I mean, I think there's always the potential for, you know, abuse of these kind of rules, and I guess I would disagree somewhat. I think that we actually have to assume that everybody's acting in good faith for these rules to work effectively. There's always the potential for abuse, and I think, you know, all of these standards of governance that we've been talking about, I think that they only operate effectively if everybody's operating in good faith.
And then, another question is about the due process. So, what kind of due process other cities have in terms of investigation so that this perceived infraction, because as we have seen, even the civil grand jury report makes incorrect statements because they are based on one party's hearsay, and when there is no cross-examination, things could be perceived by one person to be a violation when it is not. So, how, what other cities, what processes other cities have?
Some kind of advance notice requirement is relatively common, and, you know, I think that's appropriate. As far as due process goes, it's not clear that there's any entitlement to due process for a procedure such as censure or, you know, so that kind of sanction. But that said, even if there's not necessarily a due process right, some kind of notice to the affected party is best practice.
Yeah, that's true, because I think often I was accused of something even by the fact-finding report. I have no idea what they are accusing me of because there was no time or date or context of the accusation, because it was only based on some interview without any transcript described by a third person. So, it's all very confusing. And then, the public now are using those third-party interview description to attack me. I think we, this puts the city in liability if we allow this to happen. So, if we want to take any formal action, we need to be sure the city have evidence in place if we are taking any enforcement action, right?
Yeah, I mean, with respect to, I mean, ethics, I think that, you know, both the current and the 2018 ethics policy, any action on violations would be driven by council. And so, you know, that, you know, so that's who would make the determination as to whether a violation exists.
Council member Furu?
As I was going back through the 2018 code, it strikes me that there are a number of places where, you know, one's interpretation could make a very significant difference in terms of whether something is perceived to be a violation or not, and it puts me in mind of things like various legal restatements where there are lots of comments that delineate where the sort of upper and lower bounds of a particular issue might be. Is there a way that you could incorporate that sort of system in order to illustrate examples that would give us an idea of where the edge lies?
Yes, yeah, I mean, I think it depends on the specific rule you're talking about, but I had a similar process, thought process about some of the statements in there. I mean, they're, it's, they are general statements of principle that are not necessarily precise, and again, I think that goes to the comment I made in response to council member Chow's question, is that you really are presuming good faith on everybody's part, but certainly if there's some kind of commentary that would be helpful, that could be included in the version that council adopts.
Yeah, that's something I'd definitely like to see. I think Section 4, which is city officials' conduct with city staff, and Section 5, council conduct with commissions, could really benefit from it, especially given the experience that we've gone through of late and acknowledging honestly that there's a lack of trust in the community in general, and even on this dais, and I think that it would be helpful to have some examples so that people can act in good faith, knowing where the boundaries might be.
Okay, do we have?
How much time do I have?
Actually.
No, I don't have time. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I don't see Vice Mayor Mohan's hands raised, so if there are no questions from the council, I'd like to open up a public comment. That and positive use of your time.
So, yes, mayor, I have two requests to speak from Community Hall, and I see four hands raised on Zoom. Peggy Griffin and Jean Bedord have requested to speak. Peggy?
Good evening, council and staff. I would like to suggest that the ethics policy should apply to everyone, elected, appointed, and staff. That way, everybody's playing by the same rules. Training is critical and needs to be done before people are allowed to participate, especially newly elected, appointed, and hired people. The Rosenberg's rules, Brown Act, open meeting, the Form 700 submitted annually by a certain date, or you can't participate. This is important because there may be a conflict of interest that might exist. Campaign endorsements should not specify a city or council title. It's a personal endorsement, not supported by the city, and in the 2018 ethics policy, in my email, I specify exactly where, but the mayor should not be the sole decision for starting an investigation. It uses public funds and staff time, so it should be discussed in public and voted by the council in public. Also, as a member of the public, I want my council members to be unbiased, listen to public input with an open mind. That said, I'm concerned about the appearances of conflict of interest, whether it meets the strict criteria of the legal definition or not. I suggest adding a requirement that any council member who has been on the board of an organization or a company within the last 12 months should declare it and recuse themselves from any council actions, decisions, closed sessions associated with that organization. If the council member, also, if the council member has been on the board of an organization within the last five years, the council member should declare this at the beginning of the agenda item. This adds transparency and confidence that the vote is unbiased. Also, often, council members have day jobs, and I'm impressed that they have a day job and a council job. More and more, these jobs can touch upon topics and issues that our city of Cupertino concerns, examples of possible employment conflicts, a council member represented or is representing a company or organization within the last year or five years. A council member is employed by another city, which we have a case right now, and is assigned on a commission where both-
Thank you, Peggy, that is your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and next we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a Cupertino resident. I'm speaking to you today about revisions to the city ethics policy. Frankly, the current two-page ethics policy is an embarrassment. It's a bare-bones, generic document with zero enforcement, totally ineffective. Both the grand jury report and the fact-finding report clearly identified the lack of enforcement as a major governance issue. I urge you to re-adopt the 2018 ethics policy with minor revisions to align it with the new city council procedures manual and the enterprise leadership assessment report. I'd like to highlight two major sections in the 2018 report that went missing in the 2020 version. The first is the guidelines regarding council conduct. In the 2018 policy, there were sections regarding relationships with other council members, the public in both official and unofficial settings, city, staff, and commissions, as well as the media. Many of our elected and appointed officials have no experience in public service, policymaking positions, or management in general. So, training and explicit guidelines based on best practices are necessary for good governance. The ethics policy should be comprehensive, not a feel-good document. The second major section missing in the 2020 version is compliance and enforcement. What good is a policy if there's no penalties for violations? I urge this council to move expeditiously in adopting a more comprehensive ethics policy based on the 2018 policy. This was unanimously approved by a previous council, which did not face a grand jury investigation. Follow their example. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean, and we will move to our Zoom speakers with hands raised. We have five hands raised, beginning with Donna Austin, followed by Louise Sedadi, followed by Jennifer Sharon. Welcome, Donna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yes.
Hi, my name is Donna Austin. I'm a 47-year resident of Cupertino. I urge this Cupertino city council to accept the staff's recommendation and direct the city attorney to revise the city of Cupertino's ethic policy to incorporate the provisions of the 2018 city's ethic code as amended to ensure consistency with the council's procedure manual. All citizens of Cupertino are entitled to responsible, fair, and honest local government guided by a strong code of ethics. Elected officials, officers, employees, members of the committee, volunteers, and stewards of the community should comply with the law of the nation, the state, and the city. They should perform their duties with integrity and respect for one another, staff, and the public. Their actions should be done with objectivity, professional competence, confidentiality, professional behavior. This code will inspire public trust in our officers' ethical behavior and will be a model for our community to also be ethic, ethical. I thank you for listening, and I urge you to promote this code of ethics. I am so glad that it's there and that we finally are going to address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next, we have Louise Sedadi, followed by Jennifer Sharon, followed by Seema Linskog. Welcome, Louise. Louise, you'll need to unmute yourself.
There, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm Louise Sedadi. I've been a resident of Cupertino for 38 years. Good evening, and thank you so much for your service. Please follow the recommended action since that is consistent with the civil grand jury recommendation, as well as the recommendations of the city's internal auditor and the independent investigator. I've heard some talk from council member Chow saying questioning the validity of grand jury, but the grand jury is the law of the land across the nation, and one can complain about the way the government and our laws are set, but that is the law. And the current two-page policy adopted in 2020 is a minimal token policy with no enforcement provisions. By contrast, the 13-page 2018 policy was comprehensive with enforcement provisions. It addresses not only only city council, but also appointed officials. A previous council rescinded it in January 2019, leaving the gaps noted by the grand jury and private investigator. Training and comprehensive guidelines based on the best practices are necessary for good governance. The 2018 ethics code provides good guidance of guidelines with best practices and is consistent with the grand jury report, which is the law of the land, the independent investigator, and the enterprise leadership assessment report. I think the city has gone above and beyond in making sure that it's proceeding in a very thoughtful manner. The council's role is to provide direction to staff as well as commission. It was suggested by Commissioner Chow that the ethics code should be held off until the commission could give feedback to the council. This is very confusing since that commissioner has not submitted required forms in a year. So, I really feel that the ethics code needs to proceed promptly without any delay. Please follow the recommended action since that is consistent with the civil grand jury, the law, recommendations, as well as the recommendations of the city's internal auditor and the independent investigator. Thank you very much. Please continue to follow the law of the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. And our final three speakers will be Jennifer Sharon, Seema Linskog, and Glenn Fishler. Welcome, Jennifer. Whoop, there we go.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Way, and city staff. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only tonight, though I am a commissioner on the Parks and Rec Commission. First, I had a question. I was confused in the staff report where it said the top responses- I was confused in the staff report where it said the top responses to the survey were integrity and honesty, proper efficient use of public resources, responsibility in community service, and fairness. I read the survey, and it seems to say, based on the graph I saw, that respect for fellow officials, staff, and the public was at 63%, which is higher than fairness. So, if someone at some point could answer this question, that would be helpful. Second, I support bringing back the 2018 code of ethics as recommended. This would be a vast improvement. The civil grand jury and the subsequent independent investigator stated the need for this or similar action. A code of ethics should be comprehensive and include requirements for compliance and enforcement. Last, I support Councilmember Chow's idea, which she stated, which I believe she stated this evening, which is to remove commissioners that do not follow the FPPC reporting requirements each year in a timely manner, including the Form 700s. These forms are simple to fill out, I've done it myself, and should be a basic requirement of being on a commission. Councilmembers should also follow all FPPC requirements. Councilmembers that do not follow the requirements for filing all relevant forms truthfully and in a timely manner, whether for their campaigns or during their tenure, should also face city consequences for these actions. Thank you for considering my input this evening and your work on behalf of Cupertino. Thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. And next, we have Seema Linskog, followed by Glenn Fishler. Welcome, Seema. And Seema, I see you are unmuted. And your volume-
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Respected city council, sorry, I'm like, I have really bad cold, and my voice is dying, so I'll speak fast. I wanted to call in today to recommend that you adopt the staff recommendation of revising the ethics policy by reincorporating the provisions of the 2018 ethics policy. I think that's a really good idea, considering the bare-bone version of the ethics policy we have right now. I think it makes, consistent with the procedures manual, makes sense. I think it also makes sense to a minute further to include the recommended actions from the city's auditor. There was a lot of good information there, based on everything the auditor observed in our city, and I think we should adopt all of her recommendations. I do think it should apply to both council, commissions, and staff, keeping in mind that it might need to be tailored differently for the three different audiences. But I do think that residents should be able to expect the same level of integrity, proper efficient use of public resources, and responsibility from anyone they deal with who represents the city in any capacity. They should be able to expect that from any of us. We've learned a lot about proper governance in the past two years. One of the things that's become really clear is that a fundamental part of being an elected or appointed official for the city is that when that person speaks, they represent Cupertino residents, not just themselves. And we see that not necessarily being the case in a lot of commission meetings or council meetings, and that's a serious responsibility. It requires that officials take the time to familiarize themselves with the issues that come in front of them, come to the meetings whenever possible, and participate fully in all the city meetings in which they're invited to participate. I would urge the council and staff to ensure that the ethics policy includes language that emphasizes that not doing all that I just listed is failing the responsibilities entrusted into that individual by the residents who elected them. Thank you for your time and for everything you do for the city.
Thank you, Seema. Our final speaker is Glenn Fishler. Welcome, Glenn.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I'm Glenn Fishler, longtime Cupertino resident, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this subject. Hello, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, city council members and staff. I can't imagine why we are talking about reinstituting something like this, and why it was removed in the first place, what was going through the minds of others, but I know right now it's pretty obvious that this needs to be addressed. So, I'm going to keep it short and sweet, because I think plenty of people before me have said what I am about to say. I strongly encourage the city council to accept the recommendation of staff to adopt, re-adopt something like the 2018 ethics policy, which I read, and, you know, improve on it if necessary, but it's a good document. It's obviously very needed, and I strongly encourage you to take it forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. No further speakers, mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to close the public comment for this item and move back to council for council comments. Councilmember Chow, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Moore, please.
Thank you. So, within the agenda packet, there was a, there's a draft code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials, and I just emailed it in to break it out of the packet, to help people locate it more quickly. It begins on PDF 445 of the agenda packet, and it's annotated, so I, and the annotations are from Christopher J., and I would like to discuss the comments that were provided to the draft policy. So, the first one is under conduct of city officials, and the comment is, the statement is "The professional and personal conduct of city officials while exercising their office must be above reproach and avoid situations that create the appearance of impropriety, et cetera." There's a, the annotation says delete, so that's the first one. The second notation is on the bottom of page, PDF 447, conflict of interest. The conflict of interest statement, number eight, has a notation that says to delete. The next comment is, it's placed on the sentence "Consistent with the law, decision-makers will not use their official positions to influence government decisions in which they have (a) a material financial interest, (b) an organizational responsibility to or personal commitment to others that creates a conflict of interest, or the appearance of (one), or (c) a strong personal bias as to one party or position." The notation says this expands potential conflicts of interest council should discuss. So, I'm not going to go through all, I mean, I can, I'm running out of time, I have three minutes, because there are many notations in here, and I don't know if everyone had an opportunity to look at them, but I think it would be great if we could bring this item back, hear the, hear the comments about each one of these items within the 2018 draft policy, and get another look at this, because if we were to say, yes, let's go back to the 2018 policy without reading all these, the comments on it, I think we might be passing something that we want to alter, for one. I'm also hearing that this has some, I want to call it kind of punitive guidelines in it, and I'm not getting that. When I, when I look at Los Altos, they have an accountability process for admonishment and censure, and they're actually to remove council members from a committee assignment, that it was an option which Los Altos provided, but it was only after you went through a censure process. So, you didn't get, you couldn't just basically willy-nilly decide at a meeting that you're going to remove people from committee assignments and whatnot. And then, when I looked at the San Jose policy, they had, as I'd mentioned earlier, three different levels. So, they had admonition, which is similar to a warning and does not necessarily have an investigation to determine if an allegation is true. That's bothersome. We're talking about ethics here, so you're going to have an admonition without going to the trouble of finding out if what you're alleging is true. That's, I have an issue with that. Sanction allows the council member to respond to the allegation, and it is not a punishment or discipline. I thought that was kind of interesting. Censure is the most serious. It's an official statement by the council, and it is punitive, but it carries no fine or suspension of the rights of the member as an elected official, and there's a process that you would go to to get to censure. Lastly, the city council shall not impose censure on any of its members for the exercise of his or her First Amendment rights. And I think if, I don't recall reading that within our policies, but I think that that's a really good statement. Lastly, they have in San Jose a council policy manual, which has a policy for making policies, which I thought was actually pretty brilliant. So, they've got a policy for making policies, and they outline who is allowed to then change those policies, so that you don't find things have been altered without the council's knowledge and the public's knowledge. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Chow, please.
I'm still organizing my thought.
Member Fru, maybe, Councilmember Chow, you want Councilmember Fru to go first? Okay, Councilmember Fru.
This will be brief, I won't be using the whole time for this portion, I'll want to follow up later, but just by way of reference to what Councilmember was referring to, I went and checked the packet, the page, one of the pages that was referenced was 447. Councilmember Moore, can you confirm that?
Let's see, so it starts at 445, and 447 has a notation, conduct of city officials. The notation is says, for item three, there's, it says delete, I'm not sure which aspect in there, and, you know, perhaps the city attorney would like to talk about these annotations and what his intention was for us to do with these, and, yeah, that would help.
Got it, okay, because when I read this, it looks like the draft ordinance in question is the original 2018 ordinance. I don't know if the comments are relevant to anything at present, perhaps the city attorney can comment on that, but irrespective of that, what we are doing today is directing the city attorney to return to us with a red-line version of a policy. So, I don't know that we need to be overly concerned about what's dropping out of this or not, because we're not passing anything today. We are giving direction to come back with an actual red-line document that we can pass.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, I think with any document that would come back, I mean, I would, I would exercise discretion to try to revise language that could be potentially problematic, and then so some of those comments reflect that, and there'd certainly be further thought that went into it before, before bringing back a final draft. I think what would be helpful today would be to get, you know, high-level policy direction from council. So, for example, if Councilmember Moore, if you thought that there was some more formal enforcement structure that needed to be included, if there was a desire to extend this policy to staff, that would probably require some fairly significant revisions, which, you know, certainly willing to take on, you know, so, but those are the kind of directions that I think would be helpful for us today.
Thank you. So, if not, I would, okay. For the record, again, and thank you, the staff, this is a screenshot from the staff recommendation, staff presentation. The City of Cupertino did not have any adopted code of ethics prior to November 2018. All the years that Roslings were on the council, there was no code of ethics, and Gilbert and all these prior council members, who adopted this right before they left the council. And it was adopted under agenda item code overview of city council recommendation for improving effective communication with city council, with the, with council, between council and the city commissioners. And it was adopted under a very strange circumstances, right before a majority of council left, and then only, and I actually provided this information in writing to the civil grand jury, but they choose to not include this very important information, rather they provided this statement that for a 12-month gap, Cupertino didn't have code of ethics, when we have maybe about 60 years, we didn't have code of ethics. And there are other information I provided to the civil grand jury in writing, for example, the issues with the 2018 code of ethics. Item six, where it says that decision-makers will base their decision based on the facts presented at the hearing and the law. This only applies to quasi-judicial decision based on existing law, but for council members who are adopting future policies, this shouldn't apply. But that policy did not distinguish between quasi-judicial and past policy decision. Item seven also says that council should rely, their decision should rely only on the information presented at the meeting, which means we should ignore any emails from the community members, any meetings with community members, and other research that we do ourselves. And item eight, under ethics, also is questionable, because it says "A strong personal biased opinion on policy position is considered a conflict of interest." This is against the First Amendment right, and then a lot of council members are elected because they have strong opinions on policies, and that should not constitute conflict of interest, that should be fixed. And this issue I mentioned earlier with the 2018 in terms of compliance that could violate Brown Act and put the city in liability, and also that we, there was no due process in the 2018 code of conduct, and perception is deceiving, as we know, and eyewitness account is unreliable. And the fact-finding, so-called fact-finding reports, for example, did not provide any dates and times of any of the accusations, and then they, the person who are accused were never notified, so that they can even explain their position. So, here are the suggestions. First, city officials should include the council members, appointed official, and executive city staff, especially this council thinks that the council should value the staff recommendation highly. And we should revise items six and seven and eight, as I mentioned earlier, and we should include due process for investigation. And for transparency, any staff from the committee and the committee members should be disclosed to the public, and the committee members should abide by the code of ethics too, because they are providing input to staff that influence policy decision. And officials should, who has been on the board of any organization within 12 months should declare it, and that should recuse themselves, and the official that has been on the board for five years, for the past five years, should also disclose the information and distinguish between rules and values, so that we know which, and compliance should be only on rules, not the aspirational values, and distinguish between quasi-judicial and policy decision. And the mayor should not be given the sole responsibility to determine whether there is perceived violation, is a real violation, or whether any warning is necessary. This would, to encourage collaboration between council members, we should not be asking the mayor to be alone, to be both a judge and a police. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Thank you for the extra time. No problem. And I think Councilmember Moore, you have your five minutes already. Do we have Vice Mayor Mohan? His hand is raised. Vice Mayor Mohan?
Thank you, Mayor Way. I wanted to sort of move this forward and try and simplify all the- all the different issues that have been discussed so far. Just to condense it, there's ethics policy, which is, which was approved in 2020, and there was one in 2018. Just, just looking at the quantity of pages, the 2018 policy was obviously infinitely more comprehensive than the 2020 one. So my thinking is, let's just take the 2018 policy as the basis or starting point, and then add, if you recall, all the grand jury, as well as the Moss-Adams report, as well as the independent investigator, they all said one of the failings in ethics policy was the fact that there is no enforcement. So just to make things simple, take the 2018 policy, add the enforcement requirements, because I think we all agree there has to be some enforcement or some penalties for ethics violations for both council members and commissioners and maybe committee members, and proceed from there. I also want to make the point that no document is ever going to be perfect. And we have to keep coming back and back, over and over again, to make sure that we get to that goal of perfection. We're probably not going to get there, but we can keep it as we go along. So I'm not sure it serves any purpose to make sure that every single I is dotted and every single T is crossed before we can proceed with the next step, which is basically to give some guidelines to the city attorney to come back with a more comprehensive ethics policy, one which includes the enforcement mechanisms, the penalties, and, and, and a basic understanding of what it needs to be a council member and commissioner. Frankly, I was quite taken aback when I realized that the commissioners were not filling out the Form 700 disclosures in a timely manner. I didn't even know that was an option. I mean, I think many of us have done it over the years. And we just assumed that this is one of the responsibilities of being on the, on the commission. So it's not a choice that I have to decide I'm not going to submit a Form 700. It's very basic. And I think that's something we should point out, that you are not willing to comply with some basic requirements, like submitting necessary documentation. Maybe we should rethink our, our roles as commissioners and maybe do something else with our lines. So that's, that's me. So, so to summarize, Mayor, I wanted to take the 2018 ethics policy, incorporate the enforcement mechanisms that have been laid out, not necessarily every single action that needs to happen, and give some broad guidelines to the city attorney, who's going to bring it back to us. And with that, I'm actually ready to make a motion if everyone else.
So I, I'm going to make comments on my five minutes. Was that a motion on the table?
Are you talking to me, Mayor?
I couldn't quite hear Vice Mayor's words. So did she make a motion or?
I said, I am ready to make a motion if you are.
Okay. Can I make my comments first? Because I think I don't have, I didn't have attorney yet. So, Council, City Attorney Jensen, could you put up your high level, the last page of your, you want a high level directions? So first, I want to say, rules versus value-based ethics. I don't see a conflict in that. As elected officials, we got to have higher ethical values than the law bestows on us. We are representing the people. We're making policies. We got to have a higher value-based ethical standards. The rules has to be there, but we have to really be willing to make a commitment to adjust our thinking, saying that we, in addition to abiding by laws, we have higher ethical standards required ourselves. We are called honorable Chow, honorable Moore, honorable Fung, honorable Mohan, honorable Wei. I want to repeat again, this honorable does not describe us. It is an obligation for us to think honorably, to make honorable decisions, to say honorable words. These are higher ethical standards that we need to adhere to. So now we're talking about rules versus higher ethical standards. Let's go for our higher ethical standards. I really believe that this higher ethical standards need to apply to both council members and appointed officials. Appointed officials wear a badge, represents the city of Cupertino. Well, I do believe the staff have higher standards, but they are, have their own higher standards to follow. When they are on board, they have their onboarding process, and they have unions and different organizations. I'm not saying we're not holding our staff to higher standards, but I'm saying these, I would love that this higher standard applies to council members and appointed officials. The second one is, I am listening to all the council members. So if City Attorney can incorporate, according to your judgment, what's the best revision that could be applying to 2018 ethical policies and come back to us with a recommended act?
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that flexibility. And, you know, I would, I would appreciate the flexibility for any, 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 any motion to, you know, incorporate the ability of the city attorney to continue to review the policy for potential legal and implementation issues. And I would include in that the issues that were identified in Councilmember Chow's presentation. I think there's some important issues that she raises that, that need further review.
That would be great. I think we could incorporate that into our motion to, for, to authorize our city attorney to incorporate your, your recommendation according to the input what we're having right now. And the second one is, we do have laws that govern us. I do believe our city attorney knows more about laws than our citizens. I understand the one year, the five year, I feel that they are numbers thrown out out of some, somebody's recommendations. So I'm hoping that City Attorney can look into that, incorporate the laws, make sure we have rules that follow the laws, but also higher ethical standards for our city council members and the appointed officials. Okay, so that's my comment. And I'm willing to get a motion and work on that. And if someone who wants to make a motion needs time to write it up, we can take a few minutes rest up. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fung.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. In looking through Councilmember Chow's presentation, I would simply note, let me find the sections here. Under ethics, section six, decisions based on merit, and section seven, communication, both appear to already only apply to adjudicative decisions, at least per the text of the Code of Ethics. And I think this may just be a confusion in terms of the use of a term of art. An adjudicative decision would be a quasi judicial decision to begin with. So, I mean, I guess as long as the language is consistent, maybe we won't run into a problem there.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think, you know, clarity is, is, is good. I mean, I do tend to agree that those standards are appropriate for quasi judicial decisions, but not necessarily appropriate for all policy decisions.
Yeah. With respect to, you know, some of the mentions of, of the current policy for dealing with commissioners who have excessive absences, for the sake of the public, I have sent to the city clerk a copy of, let me find it here, the actual current policy, which is Resolution 16-137. So if anyone is curious, that's, that's essentially the, the policy that's being asked to be adapted. And then also for the sake of the public, with respect to our conversation about restatements, legal restatements, I've sent a random selection from the Restatement Second of Torz about trespass to chattel so that people can see what I'm talking about with regard to clarifying comments. And that is all for right now.
Thank you. I think all five of us have pretty much used our time. I didn't track Councilmember Fung or Vice Mayor Mohan's time. And I do believe that we are ready for a motion. If Vice Mayor Mohan, you would like to make your motion?
I would. Can you give me just a second and maybe I could just send an email to the city clerk?
Um, pardon?
Mayor?
Yes. Somehow I couldn't quite hear Vice Mayor Mohan's voice.
Oh, okay. Should I repeat what I said? I, give me a minute and I'll finish the language and send an email to the city clerk, if that's okay with you.
Oh, does, Vice Mayor Mohan's asking for a couple of minutes. I'm sorry, I have trouble hearing.
Yeah, she's, she's asking for a short recess to prepare language for the motion.
Okay, let's take a five minutes recess.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Are we backing action? Let's, let's be backing action. Back to council, please. Okay, we'd like to reconvene the city council meeting. Vice Mayor Mohan, do you have your motion ready?
Yes, I do. I also sent a copy to the city clerk. But let me, let me read out what I think, what I've written. Okay. So my motion is to go with the staff recommendation to direct the city attorney to revise the city of Cupertino ethics policy, to incorporate the provisions of the 2018 city ethics code as amended to ensure consistency with the city council procedures manual, and to address recommendations of the city's internal auditor and to provide direction on any additional ethics, ethics policy revision. And I wanted the following additional direction to the ethics policy. One, that mechanisms for disciplinary actions for ethics violations as detailed in the city council procedures manual be incorporated into the ethics policy. Two, that a mechanism for holding elected and appointed officials accountable to timely completion of required documentation, including especially Form 700 disclosures. Three, that the city attorney and city manager direct staff to periodically review the policy and provide training to elected and appointed officials.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Hold on for a second.
Mm-hmm. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Moore, follow up with Councilmember Chow.
Okay, thank you. So I pulled up, and I did actually send this in as a written communications a few moments ago, but I pulled up the House Divided recommendations. So for finding four, it was a comprehensive code of ethics not only provides guidance and baseline standards for ethical behavior, it includes sanctions and consequences for deviations from the standard. The city's ethics policy is generic and lacks enforcement provision and therefore fails to provide a framework to address ramifications for policy violations. What they recommended was that the city should establish an independent public ethics commission with guidance from experts in applied ethics, such as the Markula Center for Applied Ethics at Santa Clara University, to develop and implement a robust government ethics training program for all council members and to evaluate a best practices enforceable code of ethics and conduct policy that governs all council members and appointed, and appointed officials for consideration by the city council. This recommendation should be implemented by March 31, 2023. Recommended, recommendation four B is the city should reinstate enforcement procedures to enable the city council and the public to file complaints and testify at public hearings to help remediate ethics violations. This revision should include a procedure for public admonishment, sorry, admonishment, revocation of special privileges or censure. This recommendation should be implemented by March 31, 2023. It was not. And the committee, committee assignments were taken from the council members in May, and there was no policy. So we still do not have an enforcement process within this policy.
I presume you're not going to second that. Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, seconded, Mayor.
You second it?
No, I believe Councilmember Fung did.
Okay.
But that would be true. That is correct. We are, we actually are not following the recommendations from the civil grand jury.
Okay, so that's a comment. And Councilmember Chow, I believe you have a comment?
I'd like to make a motion.
A substitute motion?
A substitute motion, yes.
Okay, please.
Let me, sorry, can't find it. Okay. It's simple. Direct the city attorney to incorporate the comments from all council members and the best practices for implementation in, such as enforcement for accountability and.
Can you share your documents?
Okay. Just a minute. Wait, which screen is that? Hmm, I think I lost the screen. Okay, the orange one. The one, okay, here. So this is a motion.
Thank you.
Such as best practice for implementation for accountability. And bring back a revision to achieve the ethics policy goals, as shared by the city attorney, taking into consideration the result of public outreach and public comments as appropriate. It's more general, but I think it gives the city attorney more freedom to include a lot of the very good research that the councilmember Moore has done in terms of, in terms of the enforcement. Because the 2018 enforcement actually is very messy and not really implementable.
This is your substitute motion?
This is my substitute motion, yes.
Okay, so you're going to recommend the staff recommendation plus this?
Is there a staff recommendation?
Yes.
Yes, so, so, so the staff recommendation is, is to bring back an ethics policy based on the 2018 ethics code with revisions to address, make sure that it's consistent with the council procedures manual, and also to address the internal auditor's recommendations.
Okay.
But I, you know, that, 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 I think your motion is general enough to incorporate that, that if, you know, if necessary. So, yeah, so, so, so whether, it would be up to you whether you want to state that explicitly.
So we have a substitute motion. Do we have a second for the substitute motion?
Through the mayor, I would like to second it. And I would like to add a friendly amendment that recommended, recommendation four A and four B and four C from the House Divided. Four C is the city council should engage a conflict resolution professional to help enhance mutual understanding and respect among all stakeholders. And that would be helpful with regards to recommendation four B, where we were to have a procedure for public admonishment, admonishment, revocation of special privileges or censure implemented by March 31. implemented by March 31st, 2023. So I have that friendly, friendly amendment if you would accept.
I think that we can consider that part of the comments for council members. So I'd like to give the city attorney the flexibility to consider these recommendations.
So you're not accepting the friendly amendment?
Um, I'd like to consult with the city attorney what he thinks.
Um, yeah, so I, I can, I can at least begin to answer that question now. So, um, for C, I certainly wouldn't have any objection to engaging a, a conflict resolution professional. I'm not sure that necessarily has to be in the ethics policy, but, um, the, the recommendation makes sense. Um, I, I, I'm certainly, as, 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 with respect to four B, um, I, I, I think, you know, it would be, I'd, I'd be open to taking direction from council as to how much detail they want in the enforcement procedures. Um, you know, I, so we could certainly have multiple levels of enforcement and, um, while, as I noted earlier, there, it's not clear that there's any due process rights, some kind of notice and opportunity to be heard would be appropriate, um, for any enforcement procedure in my view. With respect to four A, um, I, I think that recommendation is a bit misplaced for a jurisdiction our size. Um, it's, it, it, um, it, it would be very unusual for a jurisdiction our size to have that kind of independent, um, ethics body. Um, I, I do have, um, experience with that kind of body in, in, in Berkeley, um, not exactly an ethics body, but one that, um, uh, enforces the local, um, campaign, um, finance rules. And it, it's, um, i- i- it's, it's takes, um, a, a significant, it's, it's a significant resource drain even for, uh, you know, a much larger city by, by staff size. Um, and, um, and I'm not sure that it always was really effective in, in accomplishing its goals. So I, I would tend to recommend against recommendation four A. I, I think there, 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 you know, certainly incorporating four B and four C is something that we could work towards.
So, um, Councilmember Frue, I'll, I'll let you make comments and I'll follow your comment.
Yeah, so just with respect to the recommendations from the civil grand jury report, we, we did file an actual response to the civil grand jury on all of these topics and essentially everything that the city attorney has said right now, I think, is reflected in, in that response and in what the commentary was at the time. Four C doesn't feel like it is relevant to this motion and what we're doing today, but it does sound like it is perfectly relevant to the training that would occur later on in the course of the year and sounds consistent with it, but I don't know that it has necessarily anything to do with, with this. Um, four B is very, very close to the, um, request that is already made in the motion made by Vice Mayor Mohan with respect to disciplinary actions. So I, I think that, that those are generally already accounted for.
So what I would like to do is, I, I would like to make another substitute motion.
Um, yes, so, so I believe, um, we have, um, two motions on the floor, so you could, you could make a, a substitute motion.
So I'm going to move the staff recommendation with the following addition directions of incorporate all three items that Vice Mayor Mohan did and add four and add Councilmember Chow's direct city attorney to incorporate the comments from all council members and best practices for implementation for accountability and bring back a revision, I don't want to put options, revision to achieve the ethic policy goals, taking into consideration the result of public outreach and public comments as appropriate. Just take out end options. Yeah, that will be my number four, and that's my substitute motion. Incorporate both Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore's, um, recommendations.
I'll first second that, but I would like to make a case for end options. So, and so, yeah, I didn't include end options in my first motion, but then I liked that when city attorney, I think last time, he provided, uh, options for us to consider. Um, and then among the options, he also has a recommendation. I think there is quite complexity, especially in terms of enforcement. So I think options will be reasonable for some cases. And by the way, I appreciate the city attorney's opinion on, on the House Divided recommendation. I actually agree with your assessment, so thank you for that. Um, so I think city attorney will make good judgment on when options are valuable or not.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if I could comment on that, I, I'd say that regardless of, of whether that language is, is in the motion, um, i- if, I feel that there are, are unresolved policy issues and, and adding options is going to get us more quickly to a decision, um, I will make sure that there are, are options for, for council to choose from because I, I don't want to bring something back to council that, that's, that's not going to be able to be passed. And so sometimes adding options helps achieve that goal. So I will look at, um, that request from Councilmember Chow with, with that goal in mind, you know, if, 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 um, you know, and I, you know, a- and I could endeavor to do that whether or not that language was in the, the motion.
I will accept your friendly amendment then.
Thank you.
So, um, comments from the council? This is Vice Mayor Chow. If not, shall we do a, oh, Councilmember Moore?
Um, this is kind of a, it's kind of a general comment about, um, about this process. Personally, I think that, um, I, I think perhaps we should have had a, done this as a study session, um, with more, with more options where we would go back basically to square one and say, what are the problems that we're trying to solve through this policymaking process? And, um, one of them could be, uh, we don't want to, we, we don't want to see our council members appear that they're using their position to get gifts for themselves or benefits for their, their buddies. Okay, that would be a simple, here's the problem, how can we go about creating a policy that can, can address that? What do we do when something goes wrong there? Another one, um, is that we, we want our commissioners and the council members to feel like they're being treated fairly. I know of, a couple of months ago, we had a commissioner who was removed and I have to say as a council member, um, sitting through that experience, it was, it was quite lengthy and it was, it was frankly traumatizing, it was difficult. And we didn't have a good pers- process for the individual to, um, be able to speak and be addressed. So there's, there's another kind of problem there. So I think, um, moving forward, when we, when we get something back, if those types of problems could be addressed, particularly with the procedures for admonishment or censure, sanction, um, or removal of someone from a commission, if that could be addressed as well, I think that would be, um, really beneficial. So people understand that they're on a, they're on a fair playing field and they're going to be treated decently. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, can we do a voice vote? Or you want to read it again?
Yes, Mayor, I just, um, just to be clear on the motion, so, um, is this for the second substitute motion, your substitute motion?
Yes, the, we're going to vote for the second substitute motion first.
And did you incorporate options then?
Yes, I did. I accepted a friendly amendment, yes.
All right. Uh, okay, I will, um...
Let's do a voice call for the second substitute motion.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Frue?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Aye.
Mayor Way?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. It's 10:15, I think we can continue or?
Uh, yes, it's not 10:30 yet, so, um, so we'll start a, a new item unless council votes to adjourn.
Wonderful. We are moving to council reports and comments, and I believe council reports have been submitted and Councilmember Moore also submitted one and we have read it, it's, and substitute, we, yeah, I think that, but I didn't see Councilmember Chow submitting one. Do you want to take a few minutes to report?
At point of, point of order, we, we had an item that was pulled from consent and it would ordinarily be after action.
Oh, I am so sorry, I totally forgot, yes. Consent number item two.
Three.
Three. Okay, we are moving to consent number item three. And, um, approved the July 18th city council minutes continued from September 6th, 2023. And, uh, we do, we won't have a staff report because it's in the, uh, report. Okay, so we're going to open for council questions first before we open for public comment. I believe Councilmember Moore, you pulled this one. Would you like to start?
Um, yes, thank you. I emailed the city clerk with, um, a minute edits for page seven, item 13 of the July 18th, 2023 meeting, a minute. Um, I had two edit requests, um, and one was to include some more detail regarding, um, what happened with the public comment period being truncated. Um, so, um, I would like the, um, perhaps the clerk would be able to post this for the council to see, but, um, it says Mayor Way opened the public comment period and the following people spoke, period. Mayor Way reduced the time allotted for public comment and allowed for consolidation of time among speakers. I would like that to be, um, edited to say, state clearly that Mayor Way opened the public comment period, 145 people requested to speak, strike, and the following people spoke. Next sentence, Mayor Way reduced the total time allotted for public comment to 90 minutes, reduced the speaker time from three minutes to one minute, and allowed for consolidation of time among speakers. The following, and I believe it's 82, the, um, the city clerk can check how many people, I counted it a couple of times, the following 82 people were provided time to speak and then it would go into, um, the list of the names that spoke. I would also like the minutes to include and reflect that Millen MacWana, a member of the public, spoke without being recognized, requesting his son be allowed to speak because he had not been called on due to the truncated speaker time. Mr. MacWana's request went unanswered and he received a warning by staff. And then also I wrote, I think it would be appropriate to also adjourn the meeting, this meeting in remembrance of Millen MacWana, community member and volunteer who passed away after the conclusion of the July 18th meeting. Thank you.
If there are no comments or questions from the city council, we're open for public comment?
Yes. Mayor, we have one speaker card from Peggy Griffin in Community Hall. And there's one hand raised on Zoom. Welcome, Peggy.
Sorry. Um, good evening, council and staff. I was going to list a bunch of changes, but, um, instead I support what, uh, Councilmember Moore said. Uh, it's simplified and direct and serves the purpose of describing what happened at the meeting. Uh, so I encourage you to, um, accept those changes. Thank you.
And we have one hand raised on Zoom by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Luis.
Hello, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, so it seems that the language of the, uh, the minutes seems to imply, uh, some sort of fault on this, uh, part of the, uh, the mayor. Uh, basically, there were like 90, uh, people that suddenly showed up and, um, the mayor, as is her right, uh, tried to control the available minutes, uh, that otherwise the minute, the meeting could have gone if everybody got three minutes, um, could have been a three-hour minute just to hear comments. And secondly, uh, the person, uh, that pa- uh, that was reprimanded, he was extremely loud and, uh, became very hostile, uh, during the meeting. And he was admonished, uh, because he repeatedly, uh, broke the rules. And so I think that I was present at the meeting and I feel that his admonishment was, um, uh, appropriate because, um, people are admonished at the, at the meetings, uh, whenever they, uh, break the policy. And, um, he went on for quite a long time. Uh, and finally, the person, um, that died, he died after the council meeting in front of city hall, talking to, uh, Councilmember Chow, uh, and, uh, being photographed and very excited. So, uh, the circumstances that led to his death are, uh, complicated. So, um, I think the minutes should, uh, uh, reflect that there is, should be no blame on the mayor for, uh, doing her duty very well in a very contentious, um, meeting where, um, more than half the people that came, came from outside of our city, uh, with an agenda, and they were going to push that agenda to force the City of Cupertino to follow what they wanted, uh, never know mine the consequence to our city. So I think that was a very, uh, difficult meeting, which I believe our mayor, and, um, handled very, very well. And I feel that I would like the, um, council to be very careful when they adopt and make changes to the meeting, uh, minutes that it reflect, uh, how, um, the, the fairness that, and the pressure that, um, there was in the meeting and how I really felt that, uh, the mayor did a, the mayor really went above and beyond in a very contentious situation. I hope the minutes reflect that.
Thank you, Luis. Mayor, no further speakers.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public comments. Um, since the mayor's name is being mentioned so many times, I'm going to, um, take my comments right now. Um, we are all deeply saddened by the pass of a resident, whether he or she lives in Cupertino or not. I mean, that is undebatable, and I think the respect for the passing has always been here. And, um, I do want to say that I think our city attorney knows best about what is a Brown Act violation. I understand your couple, um, come, one comment from the public, one comment from the, uh, council, believe that what I did violated the Brown Act, and I hope, um, I think I asked the attorney to confirm that. And I would like to, another confirmation, was that a Brown Act violation or that's appropriate for a, um, presider to do?
So, the case, case law is very clear that, um, that, uh, a, a legislative body can li- can limit both the length of time of the individual comments and the total amount of time available for public comment.
Thank you. And to reduce to one minute, wasn't the first time I did it, um, I did it when I was a school board president, so it is not a, um, unprecedented act of any presider, and I do believe, um, to respect the public time and the comment period is, was what I did. And as to how many people wanted to speak, how many people did not get to speak, why 83 people spoke, um, some of them may have taken the five minute, 10 minute because they have five people there. Those are details that, um, I want to ask the city clerk, do we usually record disturbances, details like that in our minutes?
Uh, uh, yes, Mayor, so we, um, so council policy is, um, that I, as the clerk, record action form of minutes, which do not typically include summary of discussions or content. Um, the public comment generally only need to include the name of the person making comments, um, as well as a motion and the maker and the secondor of that motion. So I feel that that, um, uh, follows the policy that's been set by council. Uh, the transcript is available, an unofficial transcript is available on Zoom on the recording, and, um, that has a verbatim discussion of what occurred, and as well as the video speaks for itself.
So I do think I will honor that one minute silence at the end of this meeting to respect a life and a resident, a volunteer and active member, um, in our community. And I do want to say, I do feel the minutes that's being corrected or edited by Councilmember Moore was pretty accusatory, and I, I want to take full responsibility for shortened the min- the one minute, and I do believe that's a proper thing to do. And, um, if we want to change how the minutes are recorded, we have to change it for every minute. Um, so I, I want to say we are all very sad by the passing of a person who just talked to us. So I want to say we are all very sad by the passing of a person who just talked to us, and I remember him vividly in the meeting. So I do not want to make this a difficult situation for any one of us to say because of the passing that somebody needs to be blamed. Nobody wants to lose a life. We don't want, you know, children to lose a parent, and we don't want to lose anything. And I am going to say, let's do a one-minute silence after this item so that we can pay respect. But I do want to end my saying, saying that it is not easy to be a presider, whether you're a mayor or a president of a school board. You have to keep the meeting going, make sure the public time and resources are being done, that everybody has a say, but also follow the rules. And for a hundred and seventy-something people to say, we want to accommodate everyone, it is a very hard situation to do, and I do believe that it is very important for anyone who's ever going to be a presider to make sure that we respect public time and make sure that we accommodate as much as we could. And I'm hoping that my fellow council members will agree that one-minute and ninety-minute was a good decision at that time. So I'm going to open up for Councilmember Chow.
Hi, thank you. I think the mayor didn't moderate a very difficult meeting pretty well and under all the circumstances. But I do think, I don't think we should include what happened after the meeting in the meeting minutes. That's not appropriate. But I think we should acknowledge that there were this many of people who have signed up to speak, but then we set the time limit, and this many were able to speak. Those are facts. And I don't think that's accusatory to mention these facts. So I do have a question. Do we usually record any deviation from the council procedures that we, in the meeting minutes, do we record when we change a council procedure?
If there is a council vote, I would incorporate that because it's an official action. I tend to veer away from summary, and so if there is something that the mayor explicitly takes discretionary action on, then I typically would include that, though it depends.
So you do include the mayor's discretionary action to change council?
Yes, I believe in those minutes, I did actually note that the mayor reduced the public comment allotment based on, that would normally be based upon council rule. And, sorry to interrupt, that was a council consensus, actually.
So then it's appropriate to record how many people did raise their hand, want to speak?
I typically don't include a calculation of how many speakers there were. Viewers can actually view the meeting recording and make that interpretation on their own.
The meeting recording doesn't reflect the number of people who raised their hands. Only we can see, only you can see that. I don't even know.
The number of, I don't typically include that information, Councilmember Chow. Though if it's council's wishes, I could, I don't even know that I have that information because it's not something that's part of my practice to record those details. During the meeting, I track how many hands were raised based on the nine-minute limit of people that have to have their hands raised within a certain time. But beyond that, again, I just record the actions of the meeting.
So for this, for that meeting, by the nine-minute limit, how many hands were raised? So you have that number, you said?
I believe I made a comment during the meeting, but
And those people?
I'd have to go back and maybe check my notes.
So those who raised hand before the nine minutes is up were able to speak? Or they were, or some of them were not able to speak?
There was a discussion, and that's when the mayor and council agreed on.
So some of them who raised their hands by nine minutes were not able to speak. So that's a deviation from the council procedure? It's okay that the mayor made that decision. I think it's just, I think the clerk then have that record because it's, you mentioned that you said that in the meeting. I think it's fair to include that as part of the meeting record.
I'll do it, council, whatever is the will of the council. I would be happy to comply.
Thank you. And the last minute, I want to correct some misstatement by the member of the public. On that day, July eighteenth, I think more than half of the public comments were from Cupertino residents, and they, vast majority opposed that bill. The handful of people who support the bill, the bill came from outside of Cupertino. So that, I think it's for the record, we need to correct that. This was, this is a very passionate issue for our community, and yeah, we should respect the fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Fruin?
Yeah, I understand the passions on the issue, but I don't think that we should be abrogating the judgment of the city clerk on the thing that is most specifically within her remit. As for Councilmember Moore, I'm sorry, Councilmember Chow's contention with regard to who was from Cupertino and who wasn't, I will take that up with her personally because I kept a tally, and my numbers do not match hers.
Okay, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Mohan did not raise her hand. Councilmember Moore, you have an hour, one minute, twenty-five seconds.
Okay, thank you. I would like to clarify something with the city attorney because I'm seeing some inconsistency because I'm looking at the 2018 ethics policy, be fair and equitable in allocating public hearing time to individual speakers. But my understanding of your interpretation of the Brown Act is that it is perfectly acceptable for the mayor, and I'm going to assume this also means a chair of any committee, to shorten the speaking time, the total length of time and the total amount per speaker such that a number of individuals who properly submitted their cards to speak are not allowed to speak. So does that mean that I could have been doing that on any of the committees that I was chairing previously? I can actually prevent individuals from speaking if my, if the total time is inadequate that I set.
Yeah, I mean, it's crystal clear that that's allowed under the Brown Act. That discretion has to be exercised reasonably. When you have, you know, well over an hour of public comment on an issue, even with time severely shortened, it's just crystal clear that that's a reasonable exercise of that discretion. And I mean, there are good policy reasons for doing so as well. I mean, even with those restrictions, by the time council actually got around to deliberating and voting on what was discussed, a large number of people had already left the room. And so the job of the chair is to balance the issue of allowing people to be heard, and certainly council got a representative cross-section of many different and, you know, clearly, you know, strongly, strongly different views in that meeting, you know. So there was, I don't think there was any shortage of public interest. I think from a policy perspective, it's important to balance that feedback with giving members of the public an opportunity to view council deliberating and making a decision. And the later we get into the night, the harder that gets, right? You just lose people, you know, even on a topic with as much passion as we saw at that meeting. So I think that's the balance that you have to strike. And, you know, it's possible that somebody else might have struck a different balance than the mayor, but certainly that's her discretion, and I don't think it's unreasonable.
Councilmember Chow, can you let Vice Mayor Mohan speak first? Vice Mayor Mohan, your hands is up.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we are treading on dangerous ground when we go back and revise minutes based on interpretations. There was nothing that was not compliant with the Brown Act or with the law as attested by the city attorney. And I think if we just keep going back and revising minutes of prior meetings based on, you know, recollections which are, you know, which change. It's been two months since the incident happened, and my recommendation is to move ahead and approve the July eighteen minutes as they stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. And you have?
Just a point of order. Was that a motion?
Vice Mayor Mohan, I think the question was, did you make a motion or you're just making a comment?
I can make a motion to approve the July eighteen city council minutes.
Second.
Okay, comment? Yep.
So, so I'd like to know the case law that the city attorney mentioned regarding this particular issue because when, especially, I think democracy, we want to respect minority opinion. When you have a large number of people who are on one side of the issue, a small number on the other side, if we truncate the time, we might not allow the minority to be able to have their voice. So I'm just wondering, I'm curious about the case law. And I'd like to make a substitute motion if?
Why don't you like?
May?
I'm happy to share that with you.
So I'd like to make a substitute motion. I, it's just simple. I just want to include the number of people who did raise their hand by the nine-minute mark because according to our council procedure, that's on the record. And it was announced by the city clerk at the meeting. That's it. And that's not, I don't think that's a comment on the mayor's behavior or not. I would have done the same thing likely based on what I know at the time, right? I think the mayor did whatever, what she thought was best at the time. But I do understand the people who raised their hand, was not able to speak, would like to be recognized in the meeting minutes, so that we should give them that at least. Recognize this many people did raise their hand by the nine-minute mark, but, yeah. And without any comments, just a simple number and statement.
We have a substitute motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, and I think it's important to, that members of the public are aware that we've had this change. I know many of us were here September eighteenth and nineteenth in 2018, and we had many, many hours of public comments. And I think there rightfully should be some concern if individuals are coming to our meetings and they want their voices heard, and they're not.
Okay, so we have a second of the substitute motion. I want to repeat again, I do believe city attorney make it very clear. It is a reasonable discretion. And I made it very clear in the beginning of the meeting that everybody's got one minute, and we have ninety minutes, sixty minutes in the house, and thirty minutes at Zoom, and that is properly recorded. So it doesn't matter how much Councilmember Moore feels that people did not get to speak. And I think if anyone was presiding that motion in the meeting would understand, I appreciate Councilmember Chow's understanding that we are not going to listen to a hundred and seventy, whether it's five or seven minutes. Okay, so that's just my comment, and then Councilmember Fruin slides first, and then you can make a comment, then we can vote.
So I agree with Vice Mayor Mohan that I think that we are treading in rather dangerous water here. We should generally speaking only be modifying the minutes if they're objectively false or misleading. And to my knowledge, the clerk is usually willing to adjust them if it is brought to our attention in advance.
Yeah, we have a brief comment.
So I want to point out whether this violates Brown Act or not is on the agenda today, actually. The only thing on the agenda is the minute. And amending the minute to include the number of people who raised their hand makes no comment on whether it's Brown Act violation or not. There is no implication of even a violation, so I want to make that very clear. Don't assume saying that this many number of people raised their hands implies any violation. It doesn't.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a substitute, let's vote on the substitute motion first. That would be Councilmember Chow's motion, and let's do a voice call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Fruin?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan, I mean Vice Mayor Mohan?
No.
Mayor Way?
No.
Motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, so we have Vice Mayor Mohan's original motion. Shall we have a voice vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Chow?
No.
Councilmember Fruin?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes.
Motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
Oh, we are at ten forty-two. Can we get, do we want to, can I get council's approval? What, we can't go on?
Well, not without a vote of council.
Okay, can I get a council vote? Do we want to put ten minutes to go over the rest of the agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second? For ten minutes, let's go to council report and city manager's report. I'll second that. Okay, Vice Mayor Mohan seconded that. Can we have both voice vote, please?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Fruin?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yes.
Mayor Way?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now, we're going to council reports and comments. I think we have four of us submitting reports, and Councilmember Chow, would you like to make an oral report?
No, thank you. I didn't prepare that.
Okay, city manager's report, please.
Mayor Way, we have a video for you to conclude before tonight's meeting.
Okay, we have information items, and then, yes, we can. Before we adjourn, I would like to take one-minute silence to pay respect to?
Then I recommend not playing my video.
Okay, so let's do that instead. So we are, everyone is very saddened for the loss of a life, and so let's do one-minute silence, just to pay respect for the deceased and the family.
Actually, if I, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to say something?
So, since it's been a while anyway, could we put this on the agenda for the next council meeting? The minute of silence, so we can do that in the beginning of the council meeting? I think that shows more respect rather than right now. And that's so we can see the city manager's report and then do the minute of silence in the beginning of the next meeting.
Well, because I received that request, so I was going to do it tonight, and I, maybe we can do both. Let's do it tonight, and we can propose agenda item. How's that? So let's, let's do a one-minute respect because I do feel that I'm sort of in the mood right now, and I think we should. Okay, let's. So, thank you very much, and I just want to say, I think we all lose our loved ones, and we carry them in our heart. They are with. They are with us all the time. So when we move through life, let's do doubly good things because we're carrying someone we love in our heart. Thank you. And I would like to adjourn the meeting at ten forty-six.